The town council meeting, please. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is a non-meeting of the town council on Thursday, May 3rd, at 6:45 PM in the town council chambers. On Thursday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM, there's a regular meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And there are three additional regular meetings, one on Thursday, May 24th, at 7:00, Thursday, June 14th, at 7:00, and Thursday, June 28th, at 7:00, again, all here in the Matthew Thornton The only other announcement I'd like to make is to give big kudos to our Parks and Recreation Department. On Earth Day, which was past Sunday, April 22nd, there were over 300 volunteers that showed up for various parks and roads within the town of Merrimack, Westman Park, Watson, Horse Hill, Wildcat Falls, Abbey Griffin, and I'm sure there were more. And they picked up 313 bags of trash. So I want to thank them for not only their time, but their obvious, you know, outcome of getting all that trash off the streets and the various parks. So we wanted to say thank you to all the volunteers who did that. Okay, Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two announcements. 2018 dog licenses are now available at the town clerk's office. Dog licenses are due by April 30th. And then also, the vacancy for the town council member, I believe the position closes tomorrow. If you're interested, please submit a resume and a letter of intent to the town manager's office by 4:30 tomorrow, April 27th. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I did want to note that Eileen Cabanelle is excused from this meeting. Okay, PFO update. You have some information, Paul?
Yes. I've been contacted by John Harrington of Horizons Engineering for a list of names of the 55 parcels that were included in the MVD-NHDES settlement. The meeting, they have scheduled a meeting for May 9th, at 6:30, in the cafeteria at the high school. Members of New Hampshire DES and the team Harrington, Horizons team, John Harrington's team, will be on hand to explain the project and explain what's going on with the project. Once we get the letter that is going out to the residents, I will make sure that gets put up on the front page of our website.
Excellent. Any additional information from you gentlemen? Okay. Okay, I'm going to rearrange our agenda a little bit, with permission from the gentleman who are going to do the project update. We're going to be moving recognition and retirement of town employee Jim Taylor up now. I know you wanted to stay for the whole meeting, Jim, and his, yeah. And your family. But we're going to do that now. This is, the town council will present an award to Jim Taylor in recognition of his retirement after more than 41 years of full-time service in the wastewater division of Public Works. Jim will retire on April 27th, 2018. And I'm going to come up and speak to you, Jim, you're going to come up as well. And Kyle, you're going to have a few words for Jim, right? You're going to be kind, right?
Well, maybe.
Should we have him sit in? Who's going to test this?
Lois, can you come up?
Excellent.
Very comfortable.
Keep thumbs up.
Do you want me to start?
No, right ahead.
All right. Jim, congratulations on 41 years of service with the town. It's a long time.
It is a long time.
I would just like to say a few words about Jim. I'll keep them brief, unlike his career. Jim graduated from the University of New Hampshire way back in 1975 with a degree in forestry. So naturally, with that degree, he ends up in wastewater. He began working for the town on January 31st, 1977, making a whopping $3.05 an hour.
How'd you find that?
The files log. And later that year, he was promoted to an operator two, working a lot in the incinerator facility. He then moved up to assistant superintendent in 1980, chief operator in 1987, and he was promoted to his current position as assistant director of public works in 2005. And even in 2015-16, he served as interim director of public works. Throughout his career, Jim has been a consistent performer and has achieved many accolades for him and the facility, which is nationally recognized for its excellence in operation. During Jim's tenure, he was chiefly responsible for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 plant upgrades, the dewatering project, and bringing asset management to the town. He's also been known to be resolute in his thinking at times, two examples of which I'd like to share. The first, when he hired our current chief operator, Leo Gadat, out of Nashua. One thing about Merrimack's plant, our stormwater is separate from our wastewater. Nashua doesn't have the same luxury. So when he brought Leo on board, he said to Leo, "You'll never have to worry about combined sewers again." A few months later, Mother's Day flood happened. Everything got combined. Fast forward a few years later, and we were all here before the town council, looking to purchase some equipment. And we had a long list that year. And we all kind of figured, coming in, that not every piece of equipment would be supported. So when Jim was bringing up his 15-year-old truck, one of the counselors asked Jim, "Can it be fixed?" Jim said, "We can fix anything." So they took him up on it. Jim is a hard-working, devoted, and kind, and always goes about his work with a smile on his face. I have learned that all it is necessary to make that smile even bigger, though, is to get him talking about his family. His family is here today, his wife, Lois, his daughter, Amy, and son-in-law, Mike, came all the way from Utah with Preston, I don't know where Preston's at, the light of Jim's life, and his other daughter, Sarah, is here. Jim, as you go forward in your retirement, we know you have many activities and hobbies planned, and we want to make sure you do them safely. So we got you a gift to help you with one of them. I'll grab that for you.
It isn't. This brings you back to forestry days, so.
So in closing, I just want to thank you for the time that I've got to work with you. You've been a friend, a mentor, and a colleague, and a confidant, and I'm truly appreciative.
Thank you very much.
And this is Sarita Croce, right? Who is going to try to fill Jim's shoes, but that's going to be hard. You have a few words to say?
No, it's going to be very hard. So Jim said, I've worked for Jim for three years, and he said that the last three years were like the previous 41 years. So, he has been, it's been a thrill working for him. I think, I said this before, he's probably the best boss, if not the best boss I've ever had in my career. I've learned so much from him. He's a mentor, a friend, and so I spent the last six months, from the time I found out he was retiring, trying to write a poem. And this is not my forte, so please excuse me. Happy retirement, boss. In the world of wastewater, you've made your way from the lowest rung to the very top. This is also very special, and it's just for you, because we have a chance to tell you how much we appreciate you. Forty years of service to the town, for which you definitely deserve a crown. We want to tell you how happy we are to have had you the way you are. You've listened to us when problems were not simple, you gave us confidence to fight them through. You've accepted us the way we are and helped us perform and make the mark. We hate to see you go, but we know it's really so. So just in case you don't know, we'll never let the memories of you go. Good luck.
I just found out a little while ago, I was asking what he was going to be doing, and a friend of his showed up, and they talked about going to the Y at 5:00 every morning. God bless him. At which point I said, "Well, now you don't have to get up at 5:00, you can go at 8:00 or 9:00." Oh, no, there's a whole crew that we meet there. I went, "God bless you, go for it." As the chair of the council, I want to be able to just say literally a few words about, we represent the citizens of the town. And the citizens of this town want to thank you for your 40 years of service and has maintained, it's going to sound weird, but being pride, we have a lot of pride in the wastewater in this town. It's not every town that has such a high-performing, award-winning, we know that too, facility. So I want to thank you for the citizens.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if any of the town council wants to say anything. Finley looks like he has a few words he has to say.
No, I thought you had a, I thought you, there's no plaque, so my thought was obsolete. So, no, I just, Jim has always amazed me. When I came back to the council in 2006, it was the time when they wanted the truck fixed as opposed to replaced. And I, those, I don't know if you remember them as difficult, but I remember, I thought it was a difficult time for some of our departments, and so, but that one little hiccup, I think it's been an amazing 41 years. You started here, I was in Germany in the Army at that point, I was a kid, so it was a while ago. But I absolutely appreciate everything you've done for the town, because it's been impressive, to say the least, and, you know, big shoes to fill, and I'm sure you've, you know, brought everybody on well, so I appreciate it, Jim. Thank you.
Dave, you want to say something?
Just, Jim, you know, working with you over the years, when I was at the PD, and how you're always professional, always friendly, when something needed to get done, you're always willing to help out. You and your crew have always done a very professional job and everything. It's always been a pleasure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
If you don't mind.
Please do.
Well, first of all, I didn't know an engineer could write a poem, so I'm really, I'm really amazed at that, so I learned something new, you know? But no, I'd really like to thank town council, you know, past and present, for their support of our budgets and, you know, important projects that we've done over the years. That means a lot to us. Eileen, Paul, Sharon, you know, for their support and guidance. Kyle especially, he's been a great boss, even though I haven't worked for him that long, we get along really well. He runs a great department. Can't forget my family, who's all here. Could you just stand up? Kind of be recognized. You know, Lois had to hold down the fort, because any time the floods came, or there were hurricanes, she knew I wasn't going to be home, she was going to be home with the kids, and, you know, I really appreciate that a lot. But most of all, I don't want to forget the really wonderful people that I've had the pleasure of working with, you know, great people, we all get along well, and they work hard for the town, so you don't always get that recognition, but the work you do is extremely important, so, you know, thank you very much.
Thanks so much for what you've done for us, we appreciate it.
You can take your toys with you now. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Stay healthy and enjoy your retirement. I will not see you at the gym. Okay, I will return to our regular scheduled program, which is the Highway Garage Project Update. Paul, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you. As you know, we've been working on the Highway Garage since it passed last April, and we've created a committee, and the committee's been working diligently to get a well-thought-out design that's efficient for the functionality of the new facility, as well as trying to rehab the existing facility. With me tonight, I have Kyle Fox, Bill Hickey, Tony DiCosta. They will be doing the presentation.
Stacy.
Stacy. I know Stacy. I wanted to save Stacy for last. And Stacy, Stacy has been a real, towards the final couple of weeks, we've been really pounding out numbers and trying to come up with the design and making sure the building is as functional as possible, and Stacy's really been the calming factor of the group that all wanted to basically run out and scream and yell, but Stacy brought us back to earth and really told us that the project can get done and will get done.
It's usually the women who do pull you back together.
Yeah, yeah.
I had to take advantage of that.
I had to take advantage. So, without further ado, I'd like to bring up Bill, Kyle, and Tony, and Stacy, if she wants to join. On that, also would be remiss not to mention Jackie and Finley also sit on the committee with myself and Lori Barrett. And even though you don't see much action going on at the facility, 80 Turkey Hill Road, there's been a lot of action in, we've been meeting twice a month for the last six months to come up with the design and plan and work it so that it will fit the budget of the $3.3 million that the voters did pass.
Thank you for the introduction, Paul. As you mentioned, we're nearing the end of the design phase of our project, and we're so pleased to be able to offer to the citizens of Merrimack and to the workers at the Highway Garage a facility that's going to meet our needs, both short-term and long-term, and is a cost-effective solution to meet those needs. I've got, to my left is Bill Hickey, president, with vice president with the Turner Group.
You got a promotion there for a minute.
Yeah, sorry. Took it right away, too. Bill's group are the ones who have done the design on the project. They've been a big part of the project right from the beginning. You may recall his assistance at the deliberative session prior to the vote on this project. Moving forward, we decided to utilize a construction management approach to the project, and after a fairly lengthy process, we had selected Turnstone Corporation out of Milford to be our construction management company. And Stacy Clark, president of Turnstone, and Tony DiCosta are here to help out with the presentation or any questions you folks may have. I'm going to let Bill kind of talk us through the project. We've got just a few slides to kind of give an overview of where we're at, and then we'll summarize with some details at the end.
Yeah, the board, to your right here, the site plan, is what we're looking at on the screen. And the building in the middle of the site, if you will, closest to Turkey Hill Road, is the existing DPW garage, just for orientation. And just north of that, a darker shade of orange, I'll call it, is the proposed location for the new building. We have a new access drive from Turkey Hill Road. On the north side of the building, there'll be a small visitors' parking lot for anybody who wants to come and visit Lori at her new building. And there will be a drive-through, so there's overhead doors, as you can see from the elevation on, that's the north elevation you're looking at. There'll be overhead doors on both sides of the maintenance bays, so there is a drive that goes around the building, so they'll be able to access the bays from both sides of the building. Rendering, I think we have Jackie to thank for the final color selection, unless Finley wants to take credit. A gray, the building is proposed to be a gray with white trim. We're still going to have the asphalt roof shingles to try to keep with that residential aesthetic as best we can and to hold the snow on the roof. And so that's kind of, as you would drive down the new driveway, that would be the perspective of the new building that you would see.
Schedule-wise, we're very excited that, we're actually expecting to have our site contractor at the facility next week to begin mobilizing and getting ready to start work. We're having a groundbreaking ceremony on May 5th at the Highway Garage. We're also having our Public Works open house the same day, so I hope everyone can come out and join us from 10:00 to 2:00 for the open house. It's also a touch-a-truck and a fill-a-truck event, I'll put my plugs in. And the groundbreaking ceremony will be at noon. Schedule-wise, so construction's going to start right away, and we expect to be in the new facility by Thanksgiving of this year. And then, there are, the other two phases of the project include the renovation of the existing garage building and the work on the fuel pumps, to upgrade those and add a canopy. And that work should be completed by the end of December of this year. What may spill into next year might be some landscaping items and miscellaneous things like that, but for, the purpose of the project will be done this year and ready to go for winter, which was the goal all along. Finally, we just want to reiterate our thanks to the folks of Merrimack and the town council. We truly appreciate the support we've received through this process, and we look forward to providing a facility that the employees and residents can be proud of. Thank you. With that, we'll open it up to any questions you folks might have on the project.
Peter?
Kyle, thank you. A quick question, because obviously it's been on the, it was raised during the whole, during many discussions here before the council on the PFOA issue, is there was somebody, one resident raised the concerns of possibility of fuel leaking from the pumps affecting the water and everything, and now we're redesigning and replacing these pumps, correct?
We're replacing the pumps, not the tanks, just the pumps.
Not the tanks, just the pumps, okay. And is there any type of added protections or anything that are going to get placed?
Not added protection, the tanks we have in place are double-wall tanks. Per code, we get them inspected every other year. We have a state inspection license that we receive.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Tom?
Thanks. So the plan is to be done by Thanksgiving or early December. Do we have any mitigation plans? Do we have any thing that we're thinking about, or what issues we might bump into that would slow us down or help us to speed up the project?
Tony?
So, the only thing that we are not aware of, that we may find, is if there's any ledge or unsuitables when we start excavating. But the goal is to, we've already started the process of the materials that are required as a long lead item, like the building itself, the pre-engineered building, so we're taking those steps to get, to get ahead of that schedule. But I think the unforeseen is anything that we find on the ground.
So that would be the site work that goes on in the next month or so?
Correct.
That would be the biggest concern?
Right.
Okay. And is there anything you can do to prepare for that, or to be better prepared to mitigate that as a problem, or do we just kind of plow ahead and see what goes?
Well, we hope that the way the building is situated, that we're, we know of a couple of areas that we may have an issue with ledge or unsuitable, so the building, I believe, has shifted slightly to avoid those areas, but it's an unknown, so it's difficult to predict what's, you know, 10 feet away. So, but right now, we have an idea where it is.
We did do some boring, some geotechnical investigation. Sorry. Sorry. We did do some geotechnical investigation prior to, you know, starting design, just to, you know, hopefully that will have, would have uncovered any issues that we're going to run into, but the soils that we found were actually pretty good.
Okay, great. Is the schedule so tight that there's no chance of it compacting at all, or therefore...
It's pretty tight right now, yeah.
Pretty tight as it is to try and make it by December?
Well, the goal is to try to get the folks into the new building by Thanksgiving, and then, we can then tackle the existing building, because we need them out of the existing building so we can go inside and do the demolition.
Well, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're talking about Phase 1. I guess I was seeing Phase 2 and 3 and wondering how those impacted, but that's the other, that's the existing building?
Correct.
Okay. So Phase 1 is just the new building? Cool. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Paul?
Just, once again, town council, May 5th, at noon. If you plan on being there, if you could let Kyle know, so we can know the number of shovels and hard-hats, so we can all dig in and have, break the ground and get this project rolling.
Kyle, I'll be there. Just email you.
Paul, I'm going to be away.
You're not going to have a big shovel?
Got a really long handle.
Yeah, if you could just let us know, that'd be great, thank you.
I'll be there.
Okay, I guess we're all set?
No, I was just going to say, I, this is the first time I've ever participated in something like this, and the approach we took, the construction management, all, I really liked that. And, you know, years ago with the school, I'd heard all kinds of nightmares with the middle school, and I just, everything that I saw, I thought it was the best way to tackle a project like this. I think I've mentioned to a couple people, actually more than a couple people, that I was concerned about a month and a half ago that we might not get this to where we had to go, but it worked, and it was impressive how it, you know, pulled together. And so I appreciate all the efforts that were put in from all the parties, so, thank you.
So we can blame him if something goes wrong?
Jackie. Jackie.
And Jackie, we're going to blame Jackie, that's it. Well, I just want to thank Jackie and you, Finley, for putting in the extra time to be able to meet with the group and represent the town council and the citizens. So thank you for your time. Okay, well, I guess that's it. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And later.
Just give them a minute.
Okay, comments from the press and public.
Hello. Oh, we're here. Great. I wanted to update you on...
Just for record.
Loreen Allen, 16 French Court.
Thank you.
Thank you for your letters that you posted on the town website over the last couple of months in support of various bills. Today, my understanding is some, one of them at least was being voted on, I hope, so maybe we'll have some answers soon, and hopefully Concord will get it together with resources, because that's where it all goes wrong in New Hampshire, doesn't it? All of a sudden, we get to the 11th hour. So I wanted to give you a couple updates and leave you with a couple of documents. I know Eileen gets CC'd with everything under the sun from DES, all the reports and memos, and I'm not sure how much, because you have plenty to do here, how much of that do you see? Do you see everything that she gets from DES, or just selectively?
Everything she does, everything, but we do get intermittent.
All right. That's important for me, just not to be redundant. I, there's a couple of documents that may want to be considered to link on the town website, but it's definitely at your discretion. One of them is a recent site investigation... at your discretion. One of them is a recent site investigation work plan. I don't know if anyone saw that. It's, I'll just leave you one copy and you can do with what you will of it, because I know Eileen got it.
And is the website address on that copy that you're going to give us?
This is all on the DES One Stop data that I've referred to.
Okay, but is it?
Before. So this is the DES report that they linked on there. So the town website has some reports that they've posted. They did one a couple months ago. This is-
And it's from the One Stop?
It's from the One Stop on DES, yes. And I think, just in the interest of putting reports there every now and then, so then, when we have questions from people, we can just say, "Hey, go look on there and read what's posted." I think that's a good place to direct people at this point, because there's a lot of, another flurry of confusion over what's happening and what's going to happen, and a little wave of emotion that I think has settled down. So this is important and very exciting, because in here, we see all kinds of points that Eileen raised, maybe some of you raised, we have, in letters and phone calls about concerns about old reports, things in the town archives, things about that drain from 2003, the tax titling, you know, how it says, "ChemFab" still on there, care of St. Oban, they're asking them to clarify ownership. There's all kinds of things they asked for here that are really good for Merrimack, because it's DES really kind of, now that they've got their negotiations for two years out of the way.
They can focus on that.
They can focus on that. So this is very, very good to see. And lots of the concerns, I think every concern that I know of that was raised is addressed in this report, which is really, really good to know. Because when you're talking, 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 and people are writing and calling, you just don't ever know, you know, are your voices being heard? So that's one. The other one that's kind of exciting is they have this work plan for residential well sampling, which is outside of that designated zone, and one of the wells that they included in this is Wendy Thomas's Ten Wildcat Falls.
I know that they were talking about expanding that beyond it, so that they've actually got a plan now for it?
They're looking at her well in particular as a data source, and the reason, we did some writing, we did some calling, we, you know, as I showed you guys and highlighted, the analyt list is a dead ringer for the same proportions on the site plan. There was a little nudge from a legal person, too, that I might have sent that to. So, that's really, really good, because there was a lot of resistance to holding to that line. And that line is in agreement, you know, it's what the company said we can live with, and the state said we have to get an agreement. So, that's just how it works. That's reality. It's never perfect. But that is good, to have her, is, she's the one. There's only one. It's of concern, because there are more wells in this town that, you know, aren't really sure.
Are they going to be doing neighborhood ones, do you know?
No, that was my other request. I said, "Hey, if you have this one well in this neighborhood, why don't you just test the data around there?" So, for whatever reason, that's not going to be done. But we talked to them in our group, and we emailed them, and we give them calls, and we have a pretty good relationship with who's who. The other thing that they did is, in March 30th of 2018, I'll leave you this if you don't have it, is they expanded the analyt test list. So this chart, I'll leave you, shows the original list as of last year, and everybody's heard me harp on this to everybody under the sun about all the analyts that they're testing for that people aren't aware of. It's not in-the-water testing, it's not disclosed when they list the MVD testing. So they expanded that list, which is very good, and part of what we've been sending them is the test lists from North Carolina and other areas where the chemicals are made, because-
So does that list test that are being done?
As of April, they're going to add this expanded list. So I'm trying to find a way to encourage, well, not encourage, educate well owners. I think well owners should be aware, because when houses are sold in this town, they're doing the old-school testing, not hearing that realtors are suggesting a PFAS test. And if a building inspector or bank is aware of it, then they add it in. If they're not, they don't. So, you know, not to cause alarm, but people should know, and then they can put in filtration if they have concerns. So, you've heard this about GenX. GenX has finally added to this expanded list officially as of this month, which is a very good thing.
There was testimony today on GenX.
Yeah. It's just mind-boggling, so-
Tells you how, I, this is what you can do in retirement, to actually watch C-SPAN.
Everywhere.
And they talked about GenX.
Oh, yeah. You're going to hear-
One, Two, and Three.
I mean, this isn't going to go away. As everybody in this town hears little things from other states and all around, they're going to go, "Oh, wait, we know something about that." So, I wrote to clarify about GenX, because it has two CASID numbers, weirdly enough, and they have this particular one in North Carolina is testing for another one. But they were able to respond to that quite well and say, "In fact, it starts out as a salt form, and it morphs into an acid form when it hits water." So, and it was way more complicated than that, but I can't say it. So, one of the things that I've asked them for recently is, okay, this is great, this list is about groundwater and surface water. This is not about dirt, and this is not about air. So my understanding about GenX with what I know about it, which is not that much chemically, but it's very light, and it's going to show up in the air, it's going to show up in rainwater, and it's going to show up in soil samples way before groundwater, because its claim to fame is it breaks down quicker. So rumor has it, it could be 26 days. That's not perfectly verified, because it's trade secrets. But if it breaks down in 26 days, part of the issue is what does it break down to? My guess is something that we're seeing, and we need to be looking at the air and the soil, because it does kind of resurface in rainwater, get into everywhere. It goes for miles and miles and miles. So, it's kind of nice. They've been surprised over the last few months that some of us kind of have learned so much, but it's been very respectful communication, and they're responding, you know, with technical information. So, blah, 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 what else, what else?
If you give those-
I will give those to-
To Paul.
To Paul, yes. So, another thing that we're working on right now is, we're talking with MVD and the new commissioners. We've given them some resources for some filtration places that we know of that are very specific about what's worked for their filtration, Husick and Peace in particular, and where they've had breakthroughs. Everywhere that has a breakthrough comes up about the 15-month mark, which is kind of really interesting when they're supposed to go years and years and years. So, they've been very interested in that, and they, my goal is to give them the connections and just get out of the equation, and maybe read a book every now and then. So, another thing we're doing is, an issue came up recently in town about health studies. You know, we keep hearing whether there's definitive or not. So what we've been doing, and I'd just like to recognize Gail and Kathy here, who don't say a heck of a lot, but they have done, I can't even say, hours and hours and hours of reading, reviewing, and looking at resources. And one of the things is, we have an extensive collection on a drive now of health studies. And the goal that we've been talking about is maybe to get in touch with the reference librarian at the library, and they could put something together, either online, or a book, or, you know, I don't know who's going to print all this out, it's very extensive. That residents, if they were interested, could go to our own reference library and read for themselves, and just see what's out there, and see if it helps, or if it answers questions, just to have that as a reference. The other news is, our health survey that we did back last summer was reviewed by a university professor, paired with an independent scientist that she knows from the West Coast, and found a bit of statistical significance, and they're going to actually do some publications of that. So, I say that's good news, but, you know, maybe yes, maybe no. But at least it's information adding to what we don't know. That's how we have to view that. The other piece that's a little interesting is, upon hearing that the school board had written a letter to St. Oban and asked them to help fund, or, you know, to donate the filtration they decide to do, they refused, and taxpayers felt pretty strongly about this, including myself. So, we wrote a petition, 741 signatures, and tomorrow, I've been kind of putting it off for a few weeks. I'm like, "All right, there's no excuse, you're not working tomorrow." A few of us are going to go there very respectfully and bring this, hand-delivered, the stack of signatures with the writing of the petition to St. Oban, and just very nicely, you know, make the case that this has been done elsewhere, you did it in New York, and they had zero detect. We have up to 45 parts here, and we just really think that we didn't have a seat at the table with DES negotiating with them, and we really feel that that should have been included in the consent decree. And I can't read any more of my handwriting, so that's that, unless there's any-
Tom, did you ask him?
Yeah, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
You're a wealth of information.
Thank you.
And just for the folks at home, like, we post some stuff on our website, but do you post on social media somewhere?
We try, you know, there's the-
It's like Facebook, isn't it?
The Merrimack Water Issues Facebook forum. There's also Citizens for Clean Water Facebook forum, that, that's meant, if you really want to get involved and see what you can do and know what's going on and stuff, that's there. CleanWaterNH.org or website. It may not be updated as well as I would like, because everybody has jobs and families and lives.
Like, do you post like the Merrimack Forum, or the New Positive Forum?
Sometimes, we're trying not to, you know, there was a lot of information that went out there last summer and fall from a lot of people, and I think it's just, when you bombard, you know, you're going to get tuned out. People aren't going to read so much. So we're trying really to make an effort to, and I've been encouraging people, as a matter of fact, there's a communications workshop on May 7th at the library at 6:30. That Rosemary Rung is going to run. I asked her if she would consider doing that, 30 years working for Dow Chemical and a consultant to companies over kind of their PR image. So, I reached out to her, and I said, "You know, maybe residents could meet with you, and you could do a little workshop and help them," because so many people are frustrated, you know, "How do you get your message across? How do you communicate effectively? And, you know, what do you want to say?" And she had some really good thoughts on that, and she's going to do that for residents who are interested also. So, trying, you know, a little here and there, just to support. One of the issues that's coming up, though, is the, you know, the private wells that are fairly unaware, that they just should be testing for that, because water systems can be put in, and they should be put in. So, okay.
Very good. Thank you, Lorraine.
I'll give this to you.
If I could just ask a quick question?
Lorraine?
Sorry about that. I just, I actually was brought to my attention months and months and months ago by Rachel Ricker, about the St. Oban supplying filtration to the school district with non-detect levels of-
Yes.
I, the article that she forwarded to me seemed to indicate that the state told them that they, that they had to do it, and that they didn't do that on their own volition. So, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that's the article that she forwarded-
Well, the village asked. The mayor of Husick Falls is actually the music teacher at the school now, so it's kind of interesting. It's a, however it is, 15,000 residents or so. So they, when they did some testing, the schools came up at non-detect. Now, the question is, in March of 2016, did they use the branch test or what? It could have been a little more, it could have been up to 12 parts, because there were some issues about which tests were being used at that point, that they quit, New Hampshire got that under control pretty quickly. Brandon spotted that, he's pretty brilliant at this. So what they did is, their initial results were zero detect, and the village said, "Hey, this is all around town, we don't know how extensive this is, but, you know, the soil, the air, we've had concerns about this, you know, corporation for ages, and we want these wells filtered as a precautionary measure." So the state said, "Sure," and they kind of said, "We agree with them," and they put it in the consent decree. And you can look that up, it is in the consent decree. So they immediately agreed to it.
Okay.
They did.
All right, no, great.
Yeah. So, you know, we didn't really get a chance to ask. They had a process where they were very town meeting, they were all at the table. So DES is very professional, and they took the reins here, and all of us, myself included, that first year kind of said, "Great, thank goodness for DES, just, they know what needs to be done." And it turned out to be a little more complex than that, so.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing none, let's move on.
Point of privilege, Mayor Chair.
Yes.
Just to let the council know, Eileen did send us a couple weeks ago, copy of the letter that Lorraine was referring to regarding Wendy Thomas. So, we do have, we have that entire four-page letter, which I thought was very substantive and outlined the goals of what they were doing with those particular properties. So, I just want to amplify that point.
I know, we've received stuff, it's like, trying to forget.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, reorganization of Town Council. Okay, this is the time, every year after the elections, we have to make a decision about who's going to be chair and vice chair for the coming year. The procedure that we've used is, there are nominations that will be made regarding the chair. If there's more than one nomination, then we would just go by vote, and the majority would win, or however, be appointed, win.
Is it win?
Win, win-win. And we'll do the same thing for the vice chair, okay? I would like to take the privilege of being able to nominate chair as Finley Rothaus. Are there any other nominations that would like to be made?
I'll second. I'll nominate whatever.
You, okay. So there's no other nominations, so what we could do is, I can call for a vote on those who would be willing to have Finley Rothaus as chair for the next year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining, yes.
Okay. So the vote is going to be 5-0-1, correct?
Yes.
With Finley Rothaus abstaining. And if I could, I could do the vice chair now? Nominations for vice chair. I would like to nominate, go ahead.
I'll nominate Tom Koenig.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor, you notice I'm not even asking if you'll take the nomination. I'm going right by that. All those in favor of this nomination of Tom Koenig as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-1, Tom Koenig abstaining. And so officially, you take the reins as of now.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you, I thank.
We're going to swap.
I just, real quickly, want to thank Nancy, because for three years, she's done-
Four years, four.
Was it four years? Oh, shame on me. I was hoping it would never come to an end. She handled all the big tasks, first the pipeline, and then the, and then the water, of course.
Well, to be honest about it, my first year was the election fiasco.
Of course.
When we had national prominence for our traffic jam. The next year was the NED pipeline. The year after that was the PFOA. So I've decided that the only common denominator was me. And if I get out of that chair, maybe everything will calm down, okay?
I am hoping and praying.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you for all of those years. All right. Next on the agenda, for this evening, we have no appointments and no public hearings. We could have legislative updates from our state representatives, is anybody here?
Did that get pulled?
Which one? Bill, I'm sorry, did I overlook something?
Yeah, recognition of Cecil Peters.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you do that?
Yes.
Cecil is not going to be here this evening.
He's not. So, well, I will then, thank you, Bill, speak to another retirement of Cecil Peters. He had worked for the town for almost 41 years, full-time service in the wastewater division of Public Works. He actually retired this past March 2nd, and that's a lot of years of service that just departed. So, we thank him. All right. Nobody, no legislators are here this evening, so we'll move to the Town Manager's Report. Paul?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Public Works and Parks and Recreation held a very successful community cleanup this past Sunday, April 22nd, with over 300 volunteers helping to clean up Merrimack to celebrate Earth Day. The volunteers cleaned up 18 different locations throughout town, collecting a total of 313 bags full of trash. Public Works and Parks and Recreation departments were thrilled with the turnout and are deeply grateful for all the volunteers who came out and helped clean up our town. As mentioned earlier, but will repeat, Public Works was pleased to announce the date for the Second Annual Open House. The event will be held Saturday, May 5th, from 10 to 2 p.m. The event will include a touch-a-truck event, a fill-a-truck with non-perishable foods to support local food pantries, and will feature a groundbreaking ceremony at noon for the new Highway Garage facility project. We hope to see you all there on May 5th. Lastly, Ken Conity, Wastewater Sewer Inspector, attended a wild NH day at Fish and Game Headquarters on Saturday, April 21st, as a representative of the New Hampshire Water Pollution Control Association Board. The NHWPCA partners with NHDES to support and educate the public on the need for clean water in New Hampshire. This event drew over 9,000 people, and they were greeted by Governor Sununu and NHDES Commissioner Robert Scott. It was a very successful day. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Peter?
Yes, I'd just like to take a moment, just step back regarding the legislative update. I know we have, what, eight legisla, eight state reps, and I know they're all hard-working, but we haven't seen one in a long time. And I know that there's important- And I know that there's important legislation that's affecting our community. And I'm gonna ask that maybe we need to reach out in some form to the town councillor to coordinate with them. There's eight of them. I'd love to see each one of them show up once a month and give their perspectives on legislation. You know, and I know they're hard workers, and we've seen Representative Christiansen here. We've seen Representative Barry, and I, you know, and I, and you know, I respect that. And I do like that there's some, there's some things out there that I think the community needs to know about, and these guys are voting on, so maybe we could put something together.
Actually, I think a call likely could be made. I don't know if anything formal has to happen, but I think a bug in the air might be good. Were you looking for something like a letter?
Just, I, I don't know how we'd go about it, but we could sit down and coordinate. And I know who would be with you or the town manager to coordinate with our state reps to say, can we start getting a regular legislative update? I know they're busy. I know they're up there. But, you know, there's eight of them, and I would love to see all of them rotate through and to meet them. There's some that we have here. I see their names. I've reached out, and I have never met them, so.
Very good.
It is a good point. It's worth a shot.
Yep, I agree. Got it? Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Bill? To echo or dovetail off of Council Albert, I know that Dick Hinch is the Majority Leader. I know his portfolio is significant right now as Majority Leader. But that being said, I think if we were to email the leader to let him know that we're looking to have a regular conversation with our state reps, I'm sure that he'd be more than happy to coordinate with, with our representatives, at least on once a month, even if it's just a hi, how, how are you? But I think, I think outreach should be to, to Leader Hinch. I think that would be the, at least from where I sit, would be the appropriate.
Yep, I agree. You could get the word out. Great, thank you, Bill. All right. We have no consent agenda. Item number one under old business. The council will receive an update on the work associated with the O'Gara Drive recreation area. And I don't know if, Paul, you're speaking to it or Kyle?
Both Kyle and I. Kyle will come up. Just want to let everybody know that the tennis courts are removed.
I saw that.
Are removed.
They are removed. They were taken out earlier this week before the rains came. They are, what, what happened was we, we asked our contractor to put some topsoil down, and we're gonna seed it due to concerns, and Director Fox can explain those concerns better than I can. But due to some concerns with erosion and things of that sort, so we are top dressing it with some, some grass seed. We did not remove the basketball courts as of yet, because we're getting into that spring, summer season where they'll be playing, and there was no alternative for them at this moment. So, we decided to leave those up at this time until our lease runs out in July of 31st, 2018. So, we'll leave those up for the time being, and we still have the skate park in its current location with the fence surrounding the fence. We have removed the ice skating rink in its entirety, I believe. So, the liner and the boards have, have been removed. Kyle can give you a little bit of update of where we stand with the volleyball court and the new home of the skating rink at Watson Park.
Pete?
Yeah, Paul, and I thought when we started this discussion, I thought that, now you're saying the basketball courts on O'Gara are gonna be used?
Well, they're gonna, we, we didn't tear them out. They were in decent shape, so, at the time being.
Okay, 'cause I thought at the very beginning of this discussion that one of the reasons was that that court was not in good condition and was not safe.
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts.
It's just, just the tennis courts.
Just the tennis court. They were, they were considered obsolete by the state reps who deal with those, the L, L... L-CHIP grant that we got, and they came out and gave us a letter saying the tennis courts were obsolete. And, but the basketball courts are in pretty good shape at this time. So, until we can find a new home for them, figured leave them up and let them get some use.
Yeah, I don't know why, but I thought the basketball courts were also, but it's just, as my fellow councillors are telling me, it's just the tennis courts.
One of the other reasons why we kind of wanted to drop, top seed, top dressing and seeded is because with the way the parking lot was and, and everything else, that just opened up that whole area for people to drive and park. So, hopefully with grass and other things, they won't be there, and it will be brought back to passive recreation with a couple of picnic tables and things of that sort. Kyle, would you like to add anything or give us an update on Watson Park, please?
Sure, thanks, Paul. Regarding the tennis court area, you will all recall that the school asked us to simply remove the court and leave, create the ground as-is. And that was the plan through Monday. Once the contractor started removing the asphalt, we went out and looked at it, and it's a very, really nice gravelly, sandy material. Really, it would have been great to harvest it, actually, but, but, but seeing it, and it's, it's about a half an acre of, of land that the tennis courts occupied. And my fear when seeing that was that we would experience a fair amount of wind erosion from the, the loose sand that was there. And of course, one of the big concerns would be if that fine, the fines from the sand blew onto the skate park, that could create an unsafe situation there. So, I spoke with business administrator Chevanel, explained our concerns, and he was happy to oblige to have us put out, we put down four inches of loam, and we're gonna seed it, just to stabilize it from, from erosion. Regarding the Watson Park project, as you recall from the budget season this past winter, we've got a number of plans that we'd like to accomplish down there. We've got a number of things in the works that we're, we're ready to, to start with, once, once given the go-ahead, and those are installing volleyball, sand volleyball court area, which will also double in the winter as a skating rink area. We'd also like to put in some fencing, some wood rail fencing, similar to what we've done at other parks, to keep vehicles from driving on the grass, which we've all seen fair, fair number of events. So, before we can do any of that, of course, though, both, both of those things would involve digging deeper than two feet for certain aspects of the project. And the park, as you guys may or may not know, is under what's called an AUR from DES, which is an approval use required. So, before we can do any digging in the park, we need to create a soil management plan and an employee safety hazard plan. We've contracted with Crider Associates to help us develop that soil management plan, and they're currently working on it. We hope to have the draft of that in the next few weeks. That will be submitted to DES for their approval. Once we get that approval from DES, then we can go ahead and start working on the park. So, fingers crossed, we'll be able to get out there this early, this spring or early summer and, and start to do some work out there.
Nancy?
I was just, I'm trying to remember, which option did we pick? Was it option three?
Yes.
It was three.
Which is located, there's a little stand of trees, kind of as you go down the little driveway towards the bridge, there's a little stand of trees to the left, opposite the gazebo or the pavilion, excuse me.
Right.
And that's where it'll be located.
The what? Let me grab Peter first.
Okay, Kyle, a couple of things. Now, as, as those volleyball courts will go in, I have a feeling they're gonna become pretty popular. Is there any plan to expand that parking lot at all there? Because, I mean, I see it now without those tennis courts open, and those parking lots seem full the last few days, especially on the nice days. So, do you guys see yourselves moving the parking lot or expanding it towards those volleyball courts a little more to create more spaces?
We haven't had that discussion yet. I, I guess that's kind of a wait and see thing. We'd be happy to take direction from the council if, if that's something you'd like to see.
I mean, I, I realistically think that you could possibly have people playing down there, and maybe even people forming a league. And then, I've also noticed that a local business seems to use that quite a bit for their parking, and I see a lot of cars there. And maybe it's time to have a discussion with that local business to say, hey, you know, things are getting busy. And, you know, I just see that as, you're gonna, I think you're gonna need more space, but I guess we could wait and see.
Yeah, I think that's something we'll definitely have to have a conversation about, because I, at some point, we'll have to do that. All right. I guess, I guess that's it. Bill, I'm sorry, yes?
In looking back at the minutes, to refresh my recollection on this issue, the, your predecessor, Council Harrington, questioned the will of the council, which to me was more of a, of an informal poll. And I'm wondering why we're, we're pressing forward on this particular project when we haven't really memorialized the intention of what, what this council envisions down at Watson Park? Because one of the things that I asked for during that meeting, and I was in the minority on this. I, I like option one and two, because I think it brings it to the forefront so that people driving DW Highway can see the facilities that we have. I think option three is, is an ill-advised location, because it's tucked way back out of the way from the road, one, for number one, but also, two, it abuts, it abuts the neighborhood in that particular area. One of the things that I had asked for was for neighborhood buy-in on this project. And now I'm looking at a set of minutes that dates back to November of last year. Here we are in April, and I have not received any information, nor do I think have our council colleagues received any information regarding the proposals that we're looking to do at Watson Park as to whether or not the neighborhood and it had any concerns.
It did say in the minutes that we were going to approach them early on. And I, I haven't heard anything, but I don't know, I didn't, I don't know if anybody from your department... That's something that we have to do, as I, I absolutely agree that they, I'd like them to understand the situation. It is a park and so on, but the reason, I mean, if we need an absolute vote to codify it, if that's what you'd like, we'll have to do that in another agenda, I believe, but...
I, I thought we, Eric, maybe I'm off, and maybe Bill can correct me, but we did take a vote on the options, and we voted on option three.
It says questions of the will in the minutes. There was no vote.
There was no motion involved.
There was no motion involved.
I think there was a consensus.
It was, it was consensus as to where we wanted to send DPW. And I've been functioning under the premise that they were gonna get all their eggs in one basket and come back with the final presentation as of related to the consensus of this council. I, look, I already know I'm going down in flames on this, and that's fine. But what I'm saying is, okay, is that there's a process involved. If we're looking to build, and I support this, let the, let the people in the community know this. I support what we're trying to do at Watson Park, because they see value in it. But if I'm, because I'm in the minority on this, because the majority wants to side it very close to that particular neighbor, at a minimum, I'd like to see that we've done outreach to the neighborhoods. And the neighborhoods don't exercise their opinion, then, then that's fine. I'm, I'm happy to proceed forward. But I think, I think what we've talked about previously back in November, I think that there needs to be more input and more consensus being brought on this particular project so that we aren't coming here like we did two years ago with the, with the trees being cut down off of Wildcat Falls, and nobody getting noticed, and all of a sudden, we have angry neighbors here wondering to know why they, why their trees were cut down.
Actually, in every, in regard to that, it's kind of a different situation. They were notified. This hasn't been yet, apparently.
Correct, so I just...
But we'll have to find out about that.
There's an analogy there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Peter?
I, Sunday I took a long walk around Watson Park. And I, the cones are out, those cones are there, Kyle, for pointing out where that tenant, where the volleyball courts are gonna be? I saw some cones out there.
I'm actually not sure.
Okay. And I don't think it's necessarily that close to the, to the residences. I'm not against us reaching out and saying, hey, let's, you know, are you aware that this is gonna happen? And, and maybe Council Coney can correct us on it. If we do this, are there any ordinances? Do we have to notify the butters or anything regarding that?
Certainly not that I'm aware of.
Are you done, Pete? Okay, again, according to the notes, option three, there was a consensus. And the notes reflect that. And Bill is correct. There was a discussion at the time about contacting the butters or, you know, residents. I think we should do that. And if, if there's gonna be a problem, we'll know about it now. Otherwise, we'll just go full speed ahead. That's all.
I mean, we've talked about putting lights down at the ice skating rink. Who wants to have lights in their backyard at nine o'clock at night, especially? And I don't know the people, the neighbors that live down there, but you don't know if you have a guy that's, that's working, working the graveyard shift from eleven to seven at St. Obane or at Budweiser. I mean, we, we don't know what they do, but the last thing you want to do is consider putting that particular type of, type of fixture, and then having that type of, Nelson will appreciate this, this kind of light pollution, you know, creeping into somebody's backyard.
But there's accommodations that can be made.
I understand, which is why...
Right, and that's something we probably will talk at, at, we'll have to have a meeting, but, Paul?
Two things. One, we can definitely go out and do a conceptual with, with the neighbors and explain it to them like we do with most of our bridge projects and, and other projects with DPW. We could do that. And the other thing is that hopefully we can get this done, and we could bring it back for the retreat, so we can have a total discussion about what the goal, the vision of the council is for Watson Park, so that we can incorporate it. The, the main thing is, is that we are working on getting a plan, because all these plans down there deal with digging and putting in post of more than two feet. So, we need some kind of ground plan that Kyle talked about. So, we have to go around with that, and hopefully, as that goes on, once that gets sent to us and we say yes, it has to go to DES to get approved before any shovel hits the ground there. So, like Kyle said, wait, wait, it's already spring. It's already May. It's gonna not be until June or July before a shovel hits the ground there. So, which will give us plenty of time to discuss the vision at the retreat, as well as, we'll set up a, a meeting with the, some of the butters on that property, all the butters, not some, all the butters on that property, Watson Park property line, and let them know what the plans are going forward. We, we understand the consensus is option three right now. We'll present option three to the butters, and if there's a lot of pushback or questions or concerns, we will definitely bring that back to the council and let you know where the butters stand, if that's okay with the council.
I think that's a good idea. You also, but Bill?
I'm going, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Tom?
So, I wasn't on the council at that time, but I wouldn't have voted for option three or intend for option three, just because I think it's hidden. And I think nothing's good out of something that's hidden, especially in a corner. And I've been down there, I've seen it, and I mean, and I mean, I'm kinda, I'm gonna agree with Council Boyd on, you know, option one or two, it's more visible. Shows are used in the park, and a lot of times, there's people then that, down there in the summertime that don't, aren't from this town, that are gonna use them. And you, you can't control what they bring in.
Right. Well, I, I would, I'd still, I would like it to move forward, talking to the neighbors about all three options. I, I think because the one would be the closest impact, we should make sure they understand that one most of all. So, if it does go that way, they'll know. And then we should have that discussion to go over it, and we can all have our reasons why we want in those locations. All right?
I just, and I know one of the reasons we chose that was, I think one and two were impacted by a flood plain. And that, that one had, you know, that concerned me, so.
Yeah, we'll do that. All right, thank you. We're all set, Kyle?
I am.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Spock.
So, before you get away, so the whole point of this discussion was the O'Gara Drive project. We've taken out the tennis courts. The basketball courts you're gonna bring, gonna take out, when the school wants us to take them out? Or at the end of June, or what, what's the plan? As some of us thought, you were planning to do that all together, because it would be cheaper to mobilize the contractor at one time and do it all at once.
Right, and that was, I agree, that was the plan. We got an estimate from the contractor to do both. And then the decision was made, as Paul suggested, that because the courts are in such good, the basketball court is in such good shape, and it really is basketball season now, or outdoor season, and given lack of a replacement plan at this point, that it made sense to leave it until, you know, the school really pushed the issue.
And we worked with the school to coordinate that plan? I thought we'd originally told them we were gonna get them out, both out together.
I can't speak to that.
I believe that when, when we talked about the tennis courts, Kyle talked to Matt, and I don't think he brought up the basketball court at that time.
I didn't.
We have to know that for sure.
Okay, we have to know that for sure. But we can, we will, I can place a call to Matt tomorrow and let him know.
Yeah, important, yeah.
We just need to coordinate all the timing, and I thought we were going to get a little more on the details of the timing, other than to say that we didn't do it, I mean. So, the rink is out, the tennis court is out, we still know what we're doing with the skate park.
Correct.
But theoretically, that has to come out by the end of June also, right? Or no?
The last I remember is that the school was going to let us know.
Correct.
If they wanted us to move the skate park, and then the basketball court as well. But it was a skate park specifically, they were going to let us know.
And that is important to know, so if we can make sure.
So we should double check.
Get that information for us, and I, as well, I thanks Tom for bringing it back to focus, I was curious as far as pricing and all, I don't know if the contractor, you know, with the loan and everything, is that $20,000 going to be impacted, and to what degree, and as well separating the projects, does it, do you know how that might affect?
Yeah, as far as the $20,000 go, that original estimate included the skate park, so we're well under that for the work that's occurred already.
But Willie, and I'm wondering, I guess, by separating the project, not having it done together, is that going to have an impact on the cost of?
It would, yeah. There would be some cost increase by having a contractor remobilize, or discussions Paul and I have had is, if it's just the basketball court, that's small enough that our own crews could probably handle that.
Oh, is it?
With our smaller equipment.
We believe that, we believe that we can get in there with a, a backhoe and get that out and actually be able, because it's a smaller area, like Kyle said, the tennis courts are over half an acre, so.
Yeah.
It's a little more difficult, but with the smaller area of the basketball court, we probably can get in there with a backhoe and get the tar up and spread the home at that point.
Okay, because we do have to, I guess we have to have a little bit more information to understand the, you know, the, the change costs and everything as well, so if we can get that sometime soon.
One other aspect of the, the project that I neglected to mention before, we did have public service come in a couple weeks ago, they removed the power service that fed the lights to both the tennis courts and the skating rink, so the power is completely removed from the site at this point.
Okay, good, thank you. Did you have some, Bill? I saw your hand a minute ago, and I don't, I got to get back in the game here.
It was regarding the skateboard park, and I think Nancy, I'm satisfied with that, because we weren't going to do anything until the school board provided us a direction.
Right, yeah.
And I kind, and I probably could have clarified with Eileen several, could have clarified.
Why, my voice isn't loud enough? It's a joke, sorry. I thought I clarified with Eileen several weeks ago that when skateboard park was open, that it was going to be open for, for the year, that was the impression that I got. I would hate to see a 180 emerge from the school board that somehow they want us to rip up the skateboard park coming into prime skateboarding season when the kids are out of, out of school, and, you know, that facility has been removed from, from them. So, I, I think there needs to be communication with the school board that at least through this year, that they're committed to keeping the skateboard park there, and give them the flexibility to decide what the next step should be. Cots Candy is probably going to make a point about some type of an agreement, and I'm guessing, but I, you know, I, you know, let, let, we can let Eileen and Paul figure out what needs to be done to, to make it happen. No, very good. Did you have some?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, I'll agree with you, but as I understand it, our agreement to, to control that property dies July 1 or 21st or whatever. July 30.
But, but there's nothing that prevents us from entering into another agreement, I mean, that's the way that I've.
Well, there is, we can't enter into any agreements until this one is dead and gone.
That's correct, until this is done, it's done, and then we can do.
And the school district will have to own it for at least an hour.
Correct.
While we make that decision, so they have to decide that they want to do that and be responsible for it, and I think that's what's, they're holding up right now, is their concern about insurance and liability and responsibility for the kids, which they're responsible for all the time during the school year, but, you know, they're, they're, I think, struggling with that issue right now, and so until they make a formal and final decision, I don't know that we can guarantee in any way, shape, or form that it'll be open all year.
And I would agree with you on that. I would agree with you on that.
Okay.
All right. We'll look further.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Is there anything further? All right. Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks.
Sorry about that. No, no. Kidding. All right, first item under new business, the council to consider appointing Tim Tenhav as a member of the National Regional Planning Commission as recommended by the planning board pursuant to RSA 36:46, I guess parentheses Roman three, I don't know if that's the usual, but that's what's on my paper.
Mr. Chairman, move approval?
Motion by Council Boyd.
Second.
Seconded by Nancy.
Nancy's looking at me like I did something wrong.
I am, I was spotted.
She's not used to that.
I like this, this is good.
Bill, would you like to speak to your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to speak to my motion, thank you very much. I am personally happy that Tim Tenhav is stepping up to participate as a commissioner on the National Regional Planning Commission over the last two years, as I've talked about during Council's comments, that the NRPC has been seeing an increased role, increased responsibility, Maramac being a big player, not just how we are impacting the economy locally, but how we're impacting other communities regionally, and I have only sat here and watched Tim from over there, I've never sat with Tim up here, like most of you have sat with Tim, and I think we all can appreciate the, the level of preparedness and studiousness and the integrity that, that Tim brings to seriousness of purpose, so I, I could, I was really thrilled that he stepped up. I do want to say that there are four people that serve on the NRPC, myself as the council representative, Karen Elmer, and that there are two other people, I'm presuming, Tim is replacing one of those members, and without going into names, that, that person was not an, an active participant. So I'm hopeful that as the planning board does their due diligence moving forward, that when that other vacancy comes, that they find an, an individual willing to volunteer and willing to be an active participant, because we really need to have four participating members from the community of Maramac on the NRPC. And I find, I do find that it can be somewhat of a disadvantage when, when Karen and I are the only people that are advocating for the town of Maramac, I think we need to have full representation on this commission moving forward, because I do see their significance and their importance growing over, over the next couple of years, obviously with the, with the, the transportation improvement plan, you know, being at the, at the forefront, so very grateful that Tim has stepped up, and I enthusiastically support his nomination. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bill. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Six zero zero. Thank you very much. Item, next item, under new business, the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $500 from the graduates of the 23rd Citizens Police Academy for the Maramac Police Department pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15. Michael, how are you, sir?
Good, good evening, Mr. Chair, and ladies and gentlemen on the board. Just letting you know, back on April 4th, we completed our 23rd Annual Citizen Academy, and that's roughly about 20 citizens come to the police department to learn a little about their police department, and they spend, you know, one night a week, usually Wednesday night, for about three months, and to see exactly what we do, from recruiting to, to patrol functions, to dispatch, to detectives, and it's one of our most successful programs that we have with the PD, we have over 30 programs, but I would say this is probably one of the most successful programs. And what happens sometimes, during the graduations, we're surprised with, that sometimes they come up with us with a check, and their appreciation for what the guys do and the girls do, and also that some of the partners that we have from other police departments that come, you know, and teach, so in this case, we were presented a check for $500 to the police department, hoping that we could spend it somewhere in the PD, and they left it up to our discretion. Will you have some, we have one good suggestion right now that we're looking at.
Thank you. Somebody, does that have anything?
Could I ask a?
Go ahead, Nancy. Ladies and gentlemen.
I move to accept and expend donation of $500 from a graduate.
Nancy, I think you're.
I'm ready. Phew, got to get back in the swing of things. I would like to move to accept and expend the $500 donation from the graduates of the 23rd Citizens Police Academy for the Maramac Police Department pursuant to RSA 31:95-B, Charter Article 8-15.
Seconded. Motion by Nancy, seconded by Bill Boyd.
And it's self-explanatory, thank you. I know your thank you notes will be sent as well.
They will be, yes.
Good, thank you.
And just for the council, I think what we're looking at for our idea with this money is, we're going to probably get a hold of probably Custom Electric, we're looking at maybe, if, if you recall, you know, Holiday Inn has that blue light that comes up on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Kind of a nice light, soft blue light, so I think we're looking to do a similar thing at the PD, that we maybe pick a corner, or maybe even look at the lights, you know, above the Maramac Police Department sign, and make it blue, something they can look at, you know, on a daily basis.
Yep, nice. A lot of commercial buildings are starting to utilize that in some fashion or another, but.
Just be aware that we have regulations that the public's responsible for not to shine light up into the sky.
Right, and that will be looked at, we will look at the town ordinance.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Six zero zero. And let me see, next item on the agenda is the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $2,250 from the St. John Newman Youth Ministry for the Maramac Police Department to be used to offset expenses for the PACT program, Police and Children Together pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15.
This was a pleasant surprise, actually, prior to March 9th, I was contacted by a member from the youth ministry at St. John Newman, kind of mentioned that they were participating in their Fast for Social Action, and they asked if, you know, Officer Keller could come down and speak to the group, and he did, but during that fasting action, which was March 10th, 9th to the 10th, they raised quite a bit of money, and I guess their goal is to give money to organizations that can help people in need. In this case, they wanted to donate $2,250 to the police department, so that would go towards the PACT program because of the success that the programs had, in that it deals with children in the town. So with that, they sent over a check for $2,250.
Very nice. Peter?
Captain, I know, I know what the PACT program is, and you gave a brief description to the council, can you let our viewers just know what the PACT program is?
Sure, I mean, a while ago, it was called the DARE program, if you recall that, and that kind of went to the side, and we created a hybrid called the PACT program, which is Police and Children Together, and basically what it is, is Rob Kelleher is our community service officer right now, goes into the schools, which is the upper elementary school, that's the target group, and talks about destructive decisions. So it's not just about drugs, although he does talk about drugs and decisions, but also talks about bullying and other decisions that are made that are not good, so that's what we've been doing for the probably the past 10 years with, with the PACT program.
Thank you.
Anything further, except the motion, do we have?
So moved.
A motion by Councilor Harden, seconded by Councilor Candy. Would you like to speak to your motion, Tom?
No, I think it speaks for itself.
Very good. No further discussion?
I would like so.
Oh, Tom?
Being a, being a member of St. John Newman and working with the Fast for Social Action program in the past, I'm really excited that they picked the police department for this donation. There are six different organizations, I believe, that they choose each year as they go through this program, and just as a little bit of a, more information behind it, the Fast for Social Action, these kids actually stop eating at lunchtime on Friday, and don't eat anything else until Saturday night after the 5:30 service at St. John Newman. They're drinking 100% juice and water that entire time, time, they're going through programs where they have members of these different six organizations come out and talk about what their, their organization does, and so that's why Officer Kelleher was invited out. They actually go out shopping with $100 to try and buy food for a family of four to last a week on $100, and we, we send them out to all the different local grocery stores that you can reach within five or 10 minutes of St. John Newman, in order to let them have an hour and a half, two hours to actually do the shopping and then come back. So these kids are in groups of six to eight elementary and high school kids typically, although we had some college kids come back this year. It, it's an amazing program, and it's, it's awesome that they, that, through the community, they chose the PACT program to support. The, the decision is made by the parishioners, influenced highly by the kids, and they're given a list of about 40 different organizations to choose from, so I'm really excited that they've, that they chose Maramac and the PACT program, and it shows that there's a lot of impact that that program has been giving to the community, and it's a very encouraging thing.
Absolutely.
We deeply appreciate that, and from what I can see from the website, it looked like there was a big turnout for, for the, for the fast.
It's been an awesome event since it started probably almost 20 years ago.
Yeah. Peter?
Just following up on Council Coney's comments, I mean, I, I think it's an excellent, it sounds like an excellent program, but I think, can we make sure, Paul, that a letter thanking the St. John Newman Youth Ministry gets sent out on behalf of the town to thank them for this generous donation? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Six zero zero. Thanks, Cap.
Cap, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the council to be presented with details and to discuss the status of the South Hegan River Trail 2014 Transportation Alternative Program project. Good evening. Hi, Carl. It's your pleasure.
Good evening, thank you, council. We're here to, tonight to talk about the, where we're at with the 2014 TAP program grant that we received, and we have a small presentation for you and a recommendation on where to go for it, and we're hoping to get a consensus vote from the council to, on how to proceed. Dawn is going to be giving us the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
So the project status right now, we have completed the feasibility phase, and it's been submitted to DOT for their approval. The reason we're here tonight is because the project costs have increased substantially, so we need to have your input at this point. Since we had submitted for the feasibility, we have been talking in meetings with DOT to try to get some of the costs down, so we have made some revisions, and the numbers you'll see tonight are with those revisions already to reduce the cost. One of the revisions was to come back down to a five-foot wide path, which is what the original application was for, and DOT was fighting us, saying we needed eight to 10 feet, so they have conceded to five feet now. The other part of it that they have agreed with is the scope of the work, so we have actually changed the scope of the work slightly. So the original scope of the work, the section one is in blue, which is going from Watson Park along the side of DW Highway underneath Chamberlain Bridge, across the Slusway, and then across the area for, to reach the existing trail end, which is marked with the sign at the end of the trail. The original application then upgraded that trail, basically with, the plan was just some stone dust and, you know, refine it a little bit better, all the way up to the FE Everett Highway. The state said at first that they wanted that ADA compliant. The state said at first that they wanted that ADA compliant and also eight to 10 feet wide, which would have put the costs of that section up to $1 million. And we just couldn't, could not do that. Plus, right at the FE Everett Turnpike, it gets very steep, and there's a 19-foot elevation change. So there would be substantial retaining walls or fill and then slopes to be able to accommodate for ADA. And it just, the costs went out of sight in doing that. So we, they have now approved a revised scope of work so that we can now do with the area that's in blue, which is our main goal, was to be able to connect Watson Park to the existing trail system. That trail still has to be ADA compliant, and, but we can come down to the five feet now. You'll also notice there's some little yellow dots going up. That was the original area where we wanted to have the trail. As part of this process, we have had to move the trail out and further into the park area. And there are pluses and minuses to that also, but that's, whoops, I went backwards. Sorry.
Can you talk to those?
I, I'm going to, yes. So the estimates from the original to the feasibility study, so the engineering part of it, which also includes the right-of-way, and in this case, historical, has gone from $50,000 to $276,000. The construction costs have gone from $495 to $821. So that's a total project cost, originally, we had $545,000. We're now up to almost 1.1 million. That's with the reductions that we've had. So the original estimate, the way, the original estimate was derived was from actual construction costs of the 2012 TAP grant. And that's the sidewalk that goes from Buckley's up to the lobster boat. That was approximately $250 per linear foot. So what we, what was done, and I wasn't here at that time, but the costs were then doubled knowing that this trail was going to have a few more issues. So the cost was doubled to $500 per linear foot. The feasibility study has now come in at 1,500, over $1,500 per linear foot. So it's tripled the cost. So the increase, the project total is 1.1 million. The TAP grant that we received is 80% of it, 80% of the original cost, which was 436,000. Merrimack has to put in their share of 20% of 109,000. The difference between the two is $553,000. So that is the town's additional responsibility. So in breaking this down and trying to discern what's happened, the engineering costs went from 50,000 to 216,000. The Chamberlain Bridge has recently been put on the red-listed bridge. We just found that out a month or two ago. So that has obviously impacted the cost of this trail.
Can you, how, how did that impact the cost of this trail?
Well, because we're going underneath the Chamberlain Bridge.
Yeah.
So there's a failing concrete beam. And that's right where we go underneath.
But that didn't fail because it was red-listed, that was failing already.
It was already fa, we knew that, but it has.
Deteriorated a lot since then.
Right, exactly. It's four years ago. There's a peer support that's deteriorating, and also, we need to replace the cantilever sidewalk, because right now, there's the metal plates that are over that area. There was also feasibility of $60,000, and that was an additional historical study that had to be done in this area. The evaluation and documentation of the categorical, categorical exclusion and problematic selection, section F, 4F, sorry, it's late, tongue tied. So that historical area that they've been most concerned about and that they've concentrated their studies in, and this took at least nine months of time to be able to get these studies done. This, it's the area on the Watson Park side with the concrete. And also, if you noticed, I don't know if I have, I don't have a, oh, there it is, there are some wooden areas in through here, which used to hold the, I guess it was a tannery at one point, so that were different bins that the water would go through and however it functioned. So those are the areas of historical concern. And back to the analysis, also, this construction of the earth embankments within those historical ruins. In the plan that we have now, we're moving the sidewalk further into the park, which increases, as you heard earlier, the AUR plan, which is the Activity Use Plan from DES. So we have to be more involved with that. In crossing the impoundment area, which is where the backwater used to be on the fire station side of the, of the project, the original plan called for a bog walk, and that now has to be turned into a 48-inch culvert with headwalls to reduce the wetlands impact, and there'll also be hand rails and whatnot to go along with all of that. It's located in an archaeological sensitive area, which means we're going to have to have more work done as we progress along, especially with the construction. It must be ADA compliant, and also, it's been four years of the inflation rate through the time. So we also have another project just down the street, 2016 project that we had approval for, for Daniel Webster Highway and Woodbury Street sidewalks. So the original, the whole grant was $650,000. We would be getting 80% from the federal government, $436,000, and the town's portion of 20%, 109,000 dollars. So.
There's an add up. I was going to say, there's 100 minutes.
Those, oh, did I put the wrong, okay. 650, 80% of 650.
I think 120. 520.
520, sorry. And 130, thank you. So those will be the two numbers. Excuse me, I pulled the wrong.
I think it came from the other. Yeah. Sorry.
So these are the, the two projects shown on this map. The area here is the Daniel Webster Highway sidewalk, which would go from the library, crossing over into the Twin Bridge area, and this is the Woodbury Street, and this is our existing project here, which is the Sauhegan Trail. So those are the projects. So our options moving forward, pay the additional $553,000 from town monies, there'd be no state funds. We could opt out of the program after the feasibility study has been approved. We can't opt out before, otherwise, we will have to pay back all of the dollars, and we would lose the balance of the 436,000 dollars in grant money that we have. The third option that we've came up with is to combine the funding for the 2016 TAP grant of the Daniel Webster Highway and Woodbury Sidewalk Project and the 2014 TAP Sauhegan Project. The sidewalk project goes away, but we can reapply in the future when the funding becomes available. It will not happen this year, it might happen next year, or possibly even into 2020. We need to go through the entire application process again for the sidewalk and be selected again. So if we take the 400 and, 545,000, which I have an extra zero on that, and 650,000, it would total 1 million, 1.2 million almost. So that would give us 100,000 extra to be able to work with. So the DPW recommends the option three. This trail, the Sauhegan Trail, is number one on the 2009 Trail and Sidewalk Master Plan. It also preserves the 436,000 in federal funds. It will help to improve the Chamberlain Bridge because we're going to have to go through that process and get that bridge repaired at some point. And DOT has allowed this type of combination in the past for both Manchester and Nashua. So this is not unheard of, to be able to do this.
All right. I was just wondering if, I know, once we get involved in grant money, things can get a little crazy, and this seems very apparent to be one of those times. If we didn't take the grant money, how far, how much could be saved of things that we would not have to do versus taking the grant money?
So stepping back to the original project intent, we had money in the budget way back in 2014 to, it was 150,000, you recall, or may or may not recall, to fix the sidewalks where we have the steel plates. When the TAP grant opportunity came, came about, we, we looked into it and said, well, we can take our 150,000, leverage it with the, the state's 80, or the fed's 80% to get both projects done. If we, if we decide to not do the TAP, the River Trail project, we'd still have to step back and fund the, the full cost of the cantilevered sidewalk that Dawn mentioned in, in her presentation.
Okay, I guess I'm thinking about all these, all these other things that we have to go through, because I, a million dollars just for that one section leading up to Merrill's Marauders Bridge just seems outrageous to me for a trail through the woods. And I understand, you know, the, the walls that you would have to do in order to be, be compliant with what the federal government wants, but do you, do you know if there's money to be saved by not doing that? Or do you have to, do we have to do that anyhow because the town's building a trail through the woods?
No, the current proposal steps back the, the scope of the project to where we would only go across the impoundment and stop at the woods. We would not have to do anything in the woods up to.
Okay, yeah, I knew that, I'm sorry.
And, and basically, what, what DOT told us is whatever length of project we do, it has to be ADA compliant. Where we stop isn't as big a concern for them, because we kept bringing up, well, what, you know, it's all good and well to be ADA compliant up to the pedestrian bridge, but on the other side of the pedestrian bridge, it's certainly not compliant. And their point was every step forward is progress in their mind. Obviously, it didn't make sense, once we learned that, to, to move forward with that part of the project. And after discussion up at DOT with their project managers, they agreed to let us scale back the project and not do the wooded section. And, and the key component of the project, there's, there's a number of areas where these TAP projects get scored. The key component for this project was the connectivity, and not doing the section in the, in the woods really doesn't have an impact on the connectivity of the project. The real focus of the project is connecting the, the east side of Daniel Webster to the west side of Daniel Webster, and east side of the town to the west side of the town. And that core goal of the project remains.
Sure, okay. Peter.
Yeah, and I've got, I don't want to monopolize, but this has brought up like a ton of questions for me. This has brought up a ton of questions for me. So I guess the first question is, if we go with your, the option three, taking the grant money, what is the out-of-pocket expense? Did I miss that? Did you just answer that?
It would be the 109,000 from the original TAP grant, plus the 120,000, 130,000 from the second TAP grant.
Okay.
So it'd be 20% of the total cost.
And you said we had money aside, Kyle, from 2014, is that, did I?
Yes, both projects have been funded through the budget, so we have those funds in our capital reserve.
So we have it, so it's not going to fix the tax rate?
Correct.
Okay. Now, there's a couple of things, though, that you've played, and you've pointed out. And, and going by, I'm a little concerned, one, where the path goes to the island. And I'm watching that island, since they've taken down that dam slowly erode, you can see the trees falling into the water, it's, that island's getting eaten up. And when I look at that path, I'm thinking, that's going right into where that path is, that island's getting eaten up by the current of the river. And I'm wondering if that's prohibited, prohibitive of its, in itself. And then I look at the other side where the concrete bulkwork is, and, you know, they've got, there's basically a tunnel for all intents and purposes there in the concrete, which I think is unsafe. Now, does this cover cleaning up that hole fenced in, that black fenced-in area? Are we going to clean that up with, with this as well?
A lot of the area, that area would get cleaned up.
And take out that, or bury that concrete and everything?
Yep, that's exactly right. When Dawn mentioned the, the little dashed yellow line on her plan, if she can look back to that one, that was the, so, yeah, go back to that picture you just had. So the original goal of the Town Center Committee was to have the trail go through those stockpens, which, what you're looking at is those are concrete pens, and the, the concrete beams you see going over the top of those is what actually holds up that cantilever sidewalk. So the original goal of the Town Center Committee was to make that the walkway through, because it, you know, it's, it's a neat little thing, and it takes you right through the second arch under the bridge to the sloughway. Going through the, the studies that we did for the historic part of it, that was one area that DHR was very concerned about, historical resources up in Concord. So that coupled with the, the AUR restrictions that we anticipate and the archaeological restrictions is what it caused the feasibility study to recommend that the trail actually go further out into the park and tie in, in there. So what would happen in this area is, just as you suggested, they would be filled with gravels. The nice thing there is the sidewalk, the, the Daniel Webster sidewalk, which has the plates, would no longer be a cantilevered sidewalk, it would have actual soil supporting it.
Okay. And, and I, I don't want to misinterpret this. I think, one, I like what you guys have, you guys have done, you've worked to try and solve this problem. And I love the idea of fixing this park up and making, making it even more beautiful, but I also didn't know that this bridge was red-listed.
We just found that out in the last month or two.
Yeah, and, and I'm sitting here thinking, we're going to do all this great work, and then they're going to tell us, we got to replace the bridge, and it's going to get dug up and buried and redone.
A red-listed bridge does not mean a, a bridge that's falling down. So what, what, what the red list does, every bridge in the state, whether municipally owned or state-owned, the state inspects on a two-year cycle. If a bridge gets on the red list, it simply means the state inspects it once a year. The deficiencies with the Chamberlain Bridge involve a number of things, chiefly, the geometry of the bridge, the narrowness of the bridge, the fact that it doesn't have an approved guardrail system, it has those concrete walls that, for it to be an approved guardrail system, it has to go through a, a crash testing process. Obviously, granite walls can't go through a crash testing process. Those are some of the key issues that have been with the bridge forever. Some of the new issues, that concrete beam that Dawn spoke of during her presentation, that has shown some significant deterioration. It's a steel, a concrete steel reinforced beam. And what that beam does, it holds up the, the granite fascia of the bridge on the, on the downstream side. That, that needs to be repaired. That wasn't known when we did the original TAP grant. So that, that certainly, by using the, the second, the 2016 TAP. So that, that certainly, by using the, the, the second, the 2016 TAP money to help fix that problem, it really solves a couple of issues for us. It keeps the 2014 project alive and gives us some necessary bridge repairs at eighty percent reimbursed cost.
Now, just, and just go back to my first statement. Do you folks have concerns about the way that island's eroding? And that will be my last one.
Well, that was certainly one of the concerns. Don mentioned the original concept by the Town Center Committee was to have a bogwok across there. And one of the reasons we're not doing a bogwok is for that very reason, we want a stabilized base that's going to last.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Peter. Nancy?
So do I understand, if we went with the option that you've offered, the bridge, in fact, would be repaired, all of the repairs that would need to be done, the sidewalk, including the underneath structure that you're talking about?
The, the entire bridge would not be worked on, just the, the elements of the bridge that are coincidental to the, the sluice way, the areas where pedestrians would be walking under it. It just happens to be that the most deficient parts of the bridge are coincidental to the project.
So the most important fixings would be done?
Correct.
What other parts of the bridge would have to be repaired over time?
So the other real deficiencies, the, the mortar joints in the granite need to be re-pointed, and that's a project that we could, we could do at some point. The, the railing issue is, is not one that's easily going to be solved, that would be a major renovation, rehabilitation to the bridge. But, but primarily, it's, it's the beam and, and column that Don mentioned, and the pointing of the, the, the mortar joints. One good thing, back when we were putting all of these bridges into the program, we did, and I, Don may remember the year, because we pulled out the sheet of paper, but it was back many years ago, we did submit this bridge for inclusion in the program. And the way that process goes is the town council signs the form that initiates the, the project, then DOT, bridge design folks, give us a cost estimate of the work, and then it gets into the program. DOT hadn't given us a cost estimate at this point, but Don has spoken with them and resubmitted it. So we should have that soon, and we can get that, the Chamberlain Bridge, into the state aid bridge program as well. And then, so even though all of the bridges so far that we've done have been replacements, you don't have to replace a bridge for it to be eligible for the state aid bridge program. We could do a rehabilitation on this bridge and have it eligible for eighty percent reimbursement. So we would seek to do that after this project to, to take advantage of that as well. Obviously, we don't want to lose this historic value of this bridge.
Yeah, I mean, taking those, the granite railings, that's so much more attractive than the metal things.
Absolutely. And that's not to say-
Would we have to replace those?
Not, it's not to say something couldn't be done. It, it would be a big project. The problem is, the only thing holding those up there primarily is their own weight and the mortar underneath them. What I've seen in other places, you could, if you put a new sidewalk or, or some new concrete, tied some heavy rebar in a J-bar kind of fashion that came up, you could drill holes in the underside of the granite, slide them over those, those J-bars to, to help support the granite on, on the, the bridge. So I certainly expect, if this bridge is ever goes through a major rehabilitation, something like that would occur to preserve the historic nature.
Right. That's all.
Tom?
So I, I think I missed something when you were talking about the historic study. What did it find, and what are we doing because of what it found? It sounded to me like you were going to fill in the historical concrete blocks with gravel, which, why do we even bother? I'd just blow them up, for crying out loud. If they're historical and we can't mess with them, why can we fill them up with dirt and put a sidewalk over the top?
There, there's two reasons. First, the, stepping back to the historic part, we unfortunately had to spend sixty thousand dollars on a historic study, which was required by DHR. And at the end of the day, they determined that, and they, and they had it studied as, as a power works center, because it used to supply power to the buildings on the site. The final conclusion of the report is that, other than the bridge itself, the area has no historic value, because too much of it has been removed.
For sixty thousand dollars, thank you.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm dying here.
We, we are too. We, we, we and our consultant tried to fight that study, and we were made to do it. The, the filling of, of the, the remnants that, that do remain is always preferable from both a historic and an archaeological aspect, because the, the items remain, even though you can't see them, they are still there, versus you go in there and, and demolish it, then it's not there. So from a historic and an archaeological perspective, it, the preference is always to leave stuff in place.
But what, so-
What they'll make us do is a series of commemorative panels, just as is in Watson Park right now. So we'll have to point out each one of the features that, even though they're buried, we'll have to point them out, that they are physically still there.
And it's better to bury them than to go ahead and put the trail through there? I, I still am confused. If it's historically significant at all, why wouldn't you maintain it open and visible and?
Well, there were two aspects there, so that was one aspect. The second aspect is it was actually slightly cheaper to bring the trail further out into the park. And that's, so, because they, both goals, both scenarios accomplished the goal of the project, the feasibility study preferred alternative was the one that buried the, the concrete pens in and brought the trail a little further out into the park.
Now, you mentioned that these, this area is also impacted by the AUR?
Yes.
Even though it's not part of the, the area that DES covered and filled?
The, the way the AUR is written is, it covers the entire Watson Park parcel.
From the street to stream?
Correct.
Yeah. Even though they didn't do any work in that area?
Correct.
Awesome.
Billy Boy.
Welcome to the Federal- Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when I look at your comment about Manchester and Nashua, are we talking about the com, the combining of the two TAP funds?
Yes.
So in other words, Manchester did it, Nashua did it, we can do it?
And that was DOT's statement to us. They, when, when we met up in Concord at the conclusion of the feasibility study, we didn't know where this project was. We went up there thinking the project was dead, if they weren't going to give us more money. They made it clear that there was no more, no more money to give, but they brought up the suggestion of combining the grants, the multiple-year grants, and let us know that they had, DOT had approved that concept on projects in both Nashua and Manchester.
Well, don't, don't follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I mean, when, when you write a grant, aren't there rules that, that specifically, when you apply for a grant, the grant monies need to be used for a specific project? I mean, wasn't that part of the, the 2014 and the 2016 grant proposals that you submitted, that the monies need to be used specifically for those, for those projects?
Since we're at earlier stages on the 2016, and we haven't begun the engineering yet, we are able to, be able to do that, to move those monies over.
Now, I'll just add one thing. So the, the purpose of the TAP grants is to provide connectivity, safe pedestrian trails-
Right. I understand that.
The money will still be used for the purpose of the grants, not necessarily the same projects that we had hoped-
Right. It's not going to be Woodbury Street, it's going to be, you'll be all in on Chamberlain Bridge.
Correct. So the purpose of the grant money is still being fulfilled.
And the state's not going to come back and nip us on the tush and?
Nope.
One, one last question. So circling back to where Councilor Harrington was going with, with Chamberlain Bridge, do we have an, an actual estimate of what it's going to take to fix the whole thing?
We don't at this point.
Oh, God, I can't believe I'm going to ask this question. Do we think it's going to be seven figures?
I don't have a guess, but-
That, I'm just asking for your, both of you are the professionals, you get the P E after your name, I'm just asking for your professional opinion, do you, do we, do we suspect that it's going to be, oh, okay, let me retract and rephrase, do we suspect that it's going to be a large amount of money to, to do the necessary repairs to Chamberlain Bridge? Because to me, that's, that, that is a significant artery going through our town. Significant artery. You, you, you're not going to build a packway along Merrimack River to bypass the center city, the, the downtown. You're going to have to do that particular type of repair. So again, to my question, we're looking at a significant amount of money at some particular point to fix Chamberlain Bridge?
If it were a bridge replacement, I would say without a doubt it would be a multimillion-dollar project.
Okay.
I don't envision this one being a replacement project. It would be a rehabilitation-
Going back to your rehabilitation comment. So rehabilitation be somewhere in the six figures?
Yes, I would, I would say that's safe to assume.
Not including expanding Watson Park out to Merrill Marauder's Bridge?
I don't follow.
What? In other words, not including the, you're going to have to do a limited amount of work on the connectivity piece under the bridge to link Watson Park with Merrill Marauder's, correct?
Not as part of the bridge project.
Okay, so that's-
That will be completed, if, if we move forward with this project-
Right.
Then that will be complete.
Okay.
And it will accomplish some of the bridge repairs coincidentally.
Which could significantly low, lower the cost-
Absolutely.
At, at some particular point, if and when we decide, well, if and when we decide to proceed with the rehabilitation of Chamberlain Bridge.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Any further questions? Nancy?
Okay, so you need to know from us tonight what you want us to do, is that correct?
We, we would, we're hoping for a consensus tonight so that we can get this project finally moving, so Nelson can, can not visit our office every week and ask us, what's the status of the project?
I really, I really think we're between a rock and a hard place. I, I don't, first of all, look at the look. It bothers me, and yet I'm impressed that you've gone the extra step. Here are the problems here, here's an option that we have that we can use, the reality is we're going to have to do something with that bridge. The sidewalk has to be fixed sooner than later.
Correct.
And whether we pay for it directly through, and we wait till we get a bright, bridge replacement grant, we're still going to have to do that. So part of me is going, this would justify, part of the thing it would justify purely by that, that it would help us at least attack the bridge somewhat now. If we don't do it, then later we've got the whole kit and caboodle.
And that was our original goal in, in budgeting for anything down there, was that hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And we do have the money for our twenty percent worth.
We do.
So that's another thing that's, you know, the whole thing, there's a lot of things that could be discussed about the things against it, but I think in the weighing of it, I'm just-
I agree.
It's a weigh, it's, it's, it's an unfortunate, yeah, okay, on my part.
And I'm, 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 I'm believing that when it comes time again to put in for-
The bridge?
Woodbury, Woodbury Street, the, the sidewalk and everything, that that should be an easier sell, because it's, you have kids every day of the school year that utilize that, and it is not the best thing the way it is currently, so-
And it's unbelievable, the prices have gone up, this is unbelievable.
Peter?
So, so I, I guess, when, when I, what did you?
Nope. Go ahead.
When, when this first present, when you brought this first presentation to me, I was thinking, my head was spinning, thinking, wow, this is not good. Your explanation has helped clear up a lot for me. I think this is a step in the right direction. It's already funded and ready to go, and the town, our end of the money, is, is already been funded and ready to budget it. I think it addresses the issue of Watson Park not being an eyesore any longer, especially that black fenced-in area, and, and let's start clearing that up. And it's a step in the right direction, let's get the trail to the other side, and, and that, and that type of situation. So to me, I, I, I like it, I'm, I'm, I think it's a good idea, I think I'd support it.
Tom?
Thanks, Kim. Can we go back and talk a little bit more about the change of the bogwok to a forty-eight-inch culvert with headwalls and rails and, and all that good stuff? Why is that necessary? And if we stopped the trail this side of the bogwok, as far as DOT was concerned, could we end there and save some money as far as the ADA compliance and stuff is concerned?
Sure. The problem with stopping on this side of the impoundment is it would no longer meet the purpose of the grant, the, the connectivity purpose.
It still gets you across the, the street.
It gets you across the street, but it doesn't connect you to the trail system that, that brings you to Wildcat Falls Conservation Area, the high school, East Chamberlain Road, uh, West Chamberlain Road, excuse me. And that was a big part of the, the grant application, was not only the connectivity across Daniel Webster, but the connectivity to the other trail systems.
Okay. So why do, why do we need a forty-eight-inch culvert with headwalls and?
So the, the change there is, and again, working early on with the Town Center Committee, what their desire was, was a bogwok and, and a, a little wooden type aesthetically pleasing bridge. Our engineers have looked at it, and given the soils and, and the fact that we want a long-term durable project, they've recommended to us that we put a forty-eight-inch culvert to handle the flow that does still come through there, and to, and to beef up the, the walk part of it, to be less maintenance than a bogwok would be. It's certainly more stable. Bogwoks, although nice and inexpensive, they're not the easiest things for, for someone pushing a stroller to navigate, for example. And they wouldn't necessarily meet the ADA compliance, which requires a five-foot path.
So what's the water that flows through there still? Is that just the runoff down the hill there?
Yes.
From the school?
Yeah.
And you need a, you need headwalls and everything on there in order to manage that? I mean, we have lots of culverts around town, many of them we're replacing, I understand, because they're inappropriate.
Yeah.
And it seems like every time we come across a forty-eight-inch culvert, we're putting a sixty-inch one in instead, or something like that, so.
In, in general, it's always a good idea to have headwalls on your culverts when you can, because it just adds a level of stability to the, to the crossing. It eliminates the possibility of erosion along the, the edges of, of the culvert.
How much does that, just out of curiosity, how much does that add to a project?
Not a lot. A, a headwall, forty-eight-inch headwall is probably a couple thousand dollars.
Oh, that's trivial.
In the scope of this, it is.
Compared to a million dollars, it is, but, okay. I, I have to agree, it's a rock and a hard place. I really hate to see the Woodbury project get lost or delayed.
Right.
But I don't see how to, how to move this part of it forward. And, and you're telling me that a significant portion of the Chamberlain Bridge would get repaired through this project?
The more, some-
The more difficult?
Some really difficult portions to repair would get repaired.
Can, can you quantify that as twenty-five, fifty-five, seventy-five percent of the project, or?
Do you have the, the project estimate?
Just take a swag at it?
For the bridge repair part of it? We can, we can get that to Paul tomorrow if you'd like, and he can forward that on to you. I apologize, we don't have that ready.
Well, I wasn't looking for fine detail, I was just looking for a swag, but.
So, okay, you can't, you have to use the acronym, don't you?
Scientific wild-ass guess.
I thought you had to use the acronym, but I guess you don't. All right. What's the pleasure of the council?
I say go with the proposal as presented.
Was that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation presented this evening from the DPW, the Town Council.
I'll second.
Of option three?
Yeah, option three.
Paul?
To combine two projects together.
To combine the two projects together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As presented, also known as option three.
And a second, the motion by Councilor Harrington, it's taken by Tom Thornton. Any further discussion, would you like to speak to that? Any further discussion, would you like to speak to that?
No, I think I've already, maybe Bill wants to speak to it, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Kyle, what happens to the ninety-seven somewhat thousand dollars left over from the monies?
Any money unspent by the project would be returned to the, would, would just go unspent, it would be returned to the program, to the TAP program.
You better hurry up and spend it before the prices go up.
Well, that, well, this, I mean, this, we're looking at an estimate of, of close to one point one million dollars, the, the, the project in the aggregate is one point two, so we're looking at roughly, you know, give or take a couple bucks, a hundred thousand dollars, that's why I'm asking the question. I guess my concern is, I trust Kyle and Dawn that the projects will be delivered on time, and if not on budget, under budget, as they've shown and proven to us in the past, I, I guess that's the concern that I'm raising at this stage.
I, I think the important thing to, to understand where we're at, we've completed the feasibility study, which is the initial preliminary engineering, the final design of the project hasn't happened yet, so to fine tune it exactly, we're, we're not there yet. Having that cushion gives us confidence that we definitely will not go over the, the budget of the two TAP grants.
And how long is this going to take to, from conception to embryonic birth, how long is it going to take?
At this point, now that we're beyond the feasibility study, the process will move much faster, we could, we could conceivably be under construction next spring.
And the minimal traffic impacts because of the majority of where, I mean, I guess, let me, let me retract and rephrase, what's the traffic impact going to be on the bridge, doing the, the bridge portion of the work?
There would be, for the, for the sidewalk portion, certainly there would probably be some alternating one-way traffic scenarios.
Like we did up at Kinkone?
Correct.
Okay.
Well.
Similar, similar to what we did at.
Kinkone, we were able to actually keep two lanes going.
Right, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Am, Am, is it, it's.
Amherst Road was closed.
Amherst Road was closed, okay.
So what this would be is, is only one lane of traffic could be going across the bridge at any time, we would obviously avoid rush hour times, typically what we do, when we're doing a, a lane closure project on Daniel Webster, is we set work hours of approximately nine o'clock to three o'clock.
And signalization or a police officer?
Typically for something like that, it would be officers and the flaggers.
Okay, okay.
And to answer your question for the cost of the structures, it's approximately two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Dawn, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Cost of what structures is two hundred and sixty-five thousand?
The bridge, you asked about the bridge, as near as I can tell with the estimates that I've got, we're looking at two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of the monies will go into the bridge.
Okay.
Of the money goes into the bridge, I guess what I was curious about is if we were going to rehabilitate the entire bridge, were we talking about five hundred thousand, a million dollars, or whatever, and so if we're putting two hundred and sixty thousand into it, that's maybe a quarter of a million, or half of fifty, five hundred thousand.
Possibly, until we get the full report from DOT, we won't know what we're looking at.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion on this, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No opposed.
Abstained, five, one, zero, with Tom Cating, voting in the negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, Kyle, thank you, Nelson, thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Nelson. Yes, you can. Next item under new business, council decide when and where the retreat slash goal session will be held, Nancy?
I just want to add a little bit more information to this.
To which? To the.
To the dates.
This, to this.
To this agenda item?
We had the town council goal sessions.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't know if you were going back, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, we had originally set the dates for either May eighteenth or June twenty, June first, excuse me, the email in the backup reflects those two dates. I didn't consider the twenty-fifth only because there's a town council meeting on the twenty-fourth, okay, I have since found out that the eighteenth is really bad for me, and I'm not sure what. So, you're being, you still have it, but, I mean, I want to be able to say that the twenty-fifth is, could still be done, it wasn't listed, but the rationale was that we had a meeting on the twenty-fourth. In the past, we've done two different things, one, we have had meetings the day after a town council meeting, or we've canceled a town council meeting and just had the goal meeting, so that's just up for discussion, that's all.
So, is there any reason why we can't do it like on a Saturday, I mean, is it specific to a weekday, I mean, I'm not retired, so I have to work, and it's, I'm just saying. And, and how long of a session?
I've lost that argument the last couple of years, about moving it to a Saturday.
Oh, okay, I'm just saying, I mean, it's just, I mean, I can't promise you if it's on a Friday, I'd be there, because I do go to work.
What was that, Paul?
Nine to four, you just.
It's nine to four, I was just whispering in his ear.
Oh, okay.
Bill, I'll try to bring it back up for you.
And not that it means anything to the council, but the eighteenth's bad for me, too, so, that doesn't mean anything.
No, we, you, you should be there, so, well, I mean, as far as Saturday, you know, I prefer weekdays, but I can make, you know, it's, if people can't make it because of work commitments, then I get it.
I just take the day off from work, so I.
That's what I do, I don't schedule anything.
Peter.
He's retired.
No, he's, he's working again.
So, I, I don't know, does it, is there dates that people, you, you definitely can't make a weekdays, what you're saying, Tom?
I can't, I, I just started something, I can't.
Yeah, no, no, fair enough.
Say right away, sorry.
I like June second.
Yeah, you want to pay my salary, no problem.
I can't do June second.
I can't do June second, not reasonably, it's my anniversary.
Okay, now, we have to also remember, which is not a reason why we shouldn't do it, but Paul and Eileen would have to work on a Saturday, that would be part of the, which is no reason why we shouldn't do it, but just keep that in mind.
Yeah, Becky, yeah, yeah, that has a big impact.
Becky's been involved as well.
Becky as well, now, the other thing is, we have contacted Buckley's.
For those dates.
For those dates, now, they were all set for the eighteenth and June first, when I talked to Becky, she had contacted them, had not heard back yet, the only disadvantage is they might be more of a competition for a Saturday for that kind of a site than during the middle of the week.
I was going to point the same thing out.
Yeah.
Buckley's on a Saturday will be more expensive.
Well, are even avail, are even available, because we use that smaller.
Carriage house.
Carriage house.
They have a cookout at my house.
So.
It's open to the public, just so you know.
It is open to the public.
So, the retreat's open to the public, too?
Oh, yeah.
It's a public forum.
Why can't we have it in this conference room, and why do we have to have it off-site?
Well, that's been the conversation.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's, that was a question asked, you know, in the early parts of retreats, goal sessions.
Yeah.
It just kind of takes it out of the area and it makes it, it really could be, but.
It's literally a nine to four meeting, even when we're having lunch, which we have lunch for like half an hour, so it's, it's, it's an atmosphere, a little bit more creativity and, and back and forth flowing, that's, not that it's not possible.
Yeah, I mean, Watson Park function hall we just replaced, I mean, just a thought.
Yeah, Paul, one of the reasons why we started to take this off-site was because of the distraction, they did it on a Friday onsite in the old memorial room, and there was a lot of distraction because a phone call would come in.
That's right.
And it's X, Y, Z, and they need to talk to the town manager right away, and all of a sudden, he's pulled out, or one of the counselors got pulled, one of, got pulled out of the meeting because there was a phone call or there was something going on, so there was a lot more distractions going on and a lot more interruptions into the meeting, when we moved it off-site, we started to do it actually at Swan's Chocolate upstairs.
That's right.
And that worked well, and then they basically closed down, and we went up to Surratt.
We have residence.
Residence, residence, so started at residence, went to Swan's, went up to Surratt, up in Bedford, they closed, all closed, and then we came back, and Buckley's has been, you know, trying to get into this kind of meetings, executive meeting, and the other thing is, like, like Nancy, Councilor Harrington has said, is that it's, it's creativity, we bring in a, a, somebody from Primex to facilitate the meeting, so it's more.
We do a lot of brainstorming.
Brainstorming, and, and the other thing was, is to relieve the staff, the other reason why we also went off-site a little bit, was if you go to a place that doesn't cater, now the staff has to bring the food in, which is not a big deal, but the sta, the staff has to bring the food in and has to go get the food and things of that sort.
Right.
So, but that's, too.
The council's question of why we moved to an off-site location.
Thank you.
Okay, how about an evening, how about we start it, you know, I, you know, maybe we don't have to go eight hours, but maybe we do an evening, you start afternoon, four o'clock, three-thirty, four o'clock, and that way folks who are working.
Just makes it.
And yes, I'm working, Tom, and I, you know, can, you can do that, there's an option, I don't know how people feel about that.
Well, again, it's, it's, staff is a, is a concern, because it just, it does take a handful of people and changes that schedule, I, you know, I mean, I, I get, actually, it's difficult when you, when you're new in a job especially, that makes it more difficult, I can appreciate it.
The nine to four, it's, you, it's nine to four, and it's, it's nine to four, and it's, we don't get to the whole agenda, we push stuff away, we don't talk about stuff in that nine to four period, because it's a lot of, like, it's a lot of discussion and, and things of that sort, it's, if we started at four o'clock, I could see it going past midnight very easily.
And nothing could, happens after ten o'clock.
After ten o'clock, so it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of conversation, it's a lot of getting out there, it's a lot of discussion with some of the topics, depends on how many topics you want to put on there, too, if you want one topic, it could be one hour, but, you know, there's a lot of things like O'Garret Drive and.
Right.
Tennis courts and, you know, things of that sort that get talked about, Watson Park visions, and it's, it is, it's, it's.
So, we're back where we started still, I, I mean, if you wanted to talk to Eileen and figure the weekend thing out, but I just, I don't, I don't know that it's a, you know, I don't know that it's the best idea.
It's availability of place, that's.
Well, and that also, because that would definitely, I can imagine it would be a real problem, at least for Buckley's, I'm sure.
Could we, are there any weekends that are not good for the council, like, I could tell you right now, the eighteenth through the twenty-first of May is, I'm not in this state, so.
So you're just not here.
Let me throw something out there. What's, there's, there's a holiday coming up, Memorial Day, Monday, the twenty-eighth. Why don't we have, why can't we do, do our retreat on the Memorial Day and incorporate the ceremony that the BFW does at the cemetery, where we meet in the morning, we go over the agenda for the day, head over to the cemetery, honor the veterans, and then wrap up the rest of the afternoon with the, with the retreat. It harmonates Council Thornton, who has to work, it's a day off, I, I, I like to presume that everybody has that day off, and we incorporate something kind of important, which is the ceremony that the BFW does for our, for our veterans at the cemetery, to me, I think that would be one hell of a productive day.
The difficulty with it, I, I think, is that we wouldn't, again, have staff that would be working on a, on a holiday, for me, I'm not going to be in the area, I am going to be in Western New York, so that wouldn't work for me, but that's still the other point, that might be a big, big hurdle, I don't know. Sorry.
I don't know, I, I would still vote for a Friday, either the twenty-fifth or the first, it's fine with me, but.
I just think this is, this is Councilor Thornton's first time, whoever we appoint to sit next to Peter will be there first time, I just think it's important to have them, even if it's just once, to understand what the, what we do from a goal-setting perspective, I just, I can't stress the importance of having those two councils be a part of this process, even if it's just once.
Well, if you, what I, if you could talk, you know, to, to the people who are be participating as far as a Saturday, and also have to reach out again to Buckley's, because they didn't.
Yeah, if I, if I.
Buckley's won't be available.
Buckley's is not going to do that. I can, like I said, I can, if you can give me, narrow it down to some dates, like the twenty-sixth of May, if everybody's good.
I'm going to be in Maine, I'm going to be in Maine that weekend.
What's, what's Tom said, what's wrong with the function hall at Wasserman?
Yeah.
You're going to have to have it catered, which is fine.
They've been putting work into it, and you, you bring somebody to deliver some food, I'm fine with that.
I think it has Wi-Fi now, too.
Not yet.
Or it's coming.
Yes.
I'd say that's part of the problem, but again, staff. It's staff, it's a weekend, you're talking weekend?
Yeah.
Staff as far as.
Becky, town manager, finance assistant, town manager.
Okay.
I mean, with respect to, with respect to Becky, you could send me to go pick up the platter, Becky doesn't have to bring this stuff to us, I mean, we, I think we're all relatively self-reliant that we don't have to have Becky take off a, a day with her family to, to do this sort of thing, to be candid with you, and if we do do it on the weekend, and I, and I say this with respect to Mr. McCally and, and to Eileen, you know, we're all together as a, we're all together as a team, and if, if, I personally don't have a problem coming on a weekend to, to participate in something like this, and I, and I would hope my colleagues and, you know, our team of Eileen and Paul would, would, would respect that and honor that, that, to, to give us, to give us a day of their time to participate in this. Okay, I just, it's, you know, all right, fair enough.
We'll make it work, but I just need to know a date.
Twenty-six probably, or June second?
I'm in Maine that weekend.
Okay.
June.
Well, see, this is the problem we're going to get into, guys.
I understand that.
That no matter what dates we choose, someone's not going to be able to make it, we're going to have to bite the bullet at some point, I'm not the chair anymore, so it's not going to be me.
Well, I like you, I like you doing, taking.
So you're looking at June second, which is a Saturday, I have no idea when Merrimack's going to graduate, I would assume it would be June sixteenth, so, you, June second or June ninth, with those two, now you're looking at those two days on a Saturday, are those bad for anyone, if that's where you want to go, I'm just trying to get dates so that we can say.
Can I call you tomorrow?
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, I got every anticipated a Saturday.
I know.
I never did.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah, I got stuff I do on Saturdays as well.
I'm on June second, I have, we have two kids graduating.
Okay, you got, you know, so.
So we're, any next drive is, no.
I'm, I'm just trying to get.
No, that's.
You know, something where we can kind of lock it down to a couple of days and, either Saturday or, you know, now we're looking at the ninth or the twenty-third of June.
Gosh. All right.
So, I'll do what anybody wants, I'll just have to confirm that I have a Saturday free, I don't know what my Saturdays are.
Listen, if I, if I have to miss it, I gotta miss it, I'm, I'm, just, that's just that, I mean, don't do it, don't, good, it's all crazy because of one person, you know.
But I also understand your dilemma, because Bill was in that position last year.
And I did, and I.
And he missed the meeting.
I missed the meeting.
So I might just have to miss the meeting.
So that's, I appreciate the dilemma is my point.
Let me ask you a council question, does the twenty-sixth work for everybody, May twenty-sixth?
Again, I, I have to check.
It didn't work, it works for me.
I'm, I'm asking the question, does May twenty-sixth work for everybody else?
I think it will for me.
And look at, I can.
It works for me as well, as, well as any Saturday does, Saturdays don't work best for me.
I can, I am going to be back in the mid-afternoon, I can make a cameo.
Well, it's sort of like a six, but a six or one, I understand, but that's six or one after is another, one counselor versus another counselor.
But I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm going into my eighth year, I'm, I'm very familiar with the goal setting, I, again, I reiterate. But I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm going into my eighth year, I'm, I'm very familiar with the goal setting, I, again, I reiterate that future colleague here to my left and Council Thornton, I just can't stress the importance that, that they be able to participate. I know what goes on, I get the, I get the packet, I get the review, I get the, I get the, I've gotten the summary, so I, I have a good gist of what's, what's discussed. And I, in truth be told, this past session for me personally, I didn't, as much as I wanted to be a part of the process, I didn't feel left out. When I looked at the work that was done, when I looked at the final product, I felt that some of the things that I wanted to see talked about were talked about, and I felt like I was on the same page with everybody else, so I don't have the sense of urgency of having to participate, unlike I feel the necessity for, for Council Thornton and our future colleague.
How does it feel to be chair?
Just at the right time. Well, if, let's make a decision if we're going to do Saturday or not, period. We're going to do Saturday, then we can talk about dates.
There's not built a date yet.
That's the decision we have to come up with.
Buckley's looking for a quick time, is that why we're rushing right now, because we, you know?
Well, you have to be able to find a place and reserve it.
Right.
That and, you know.
And there's the end of April.
Well, do we all agree that we can use the, the hall at Wasserman Park, so that, we've got that place locked up?
Also, we're coming into June, so I need to know, because if it's rented already and
We have to find out.
we have to, we have to find that out, so that's why I'm asking for a couple of dates, so I can reserve those.
June second and nine, somebody, who couldn't make the second?
Peter.
Peter.
Second's not best for me either.
Ninth? Going, going? Looks like it's June ninth.
June ninth.
And which again, to find out if it's Wasserman's available.
I'll have to find out if Peter wants to join.
Yep.
And you can get a determination where you want it.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's, and there certainly have a lot, they're a lot busier on Saturday, even the bakery is. So, them being able to provide.
We have to find that out.
Right.
Which is fine.
What do you think, Mr. Chair?
I'm, I'm putting it down in my calendar.
Is that cutting into your yoga, Mr. Chairman?
Yoga's Wednesdays.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we have to find out about that person's availability, too. The presenter from the company.
Is it going to be Rick?
Because that would be overtime for him, too, so.
I'll talk, oh, that'll be, yeah.
I'll talk to Rick and see if he's available to come down on the, on the ninth.
And let's see what the cost is on that, if it's Saturday versus.
I'm ninth, rather, I mean.
You're ninth?
The ninth, but I would still hold the twenty-fifth and the first as backup, because those are preferable to me, but.
Likewise.
Likewise. But find out about how much the cost of him, too.
I, I will reach out to him tomorrow and see if he's available on June ninth, which is part of it, yeah.
All right. He'll let us know.
I'll, yep, as soon as I find out, I'll, I'll meet him, you know, the council.
Yeah.
Very good, all right, sorry about that, that was the most painful thing for the year, I'm good.
Do you think, yeah.
Item number six under new business.
We still need to come up with thoughts and plans for that.
Oh, ideas, yes, I'm sorry, if, if anybody has, you know, ideas, there's a couple big ones that Paul has made note that we're going to have those.
What I found helpful last year, Becky can send you a, a digital copy of the topics that were on the agenda last year and mail those out, and people can say yes, yes, no, that really helped a lot.
That'll be great, so do that, and then if you can, if you have anything you'd like to have on that, just let Becky or somebody know at Town Hall and get that done.
Becky or, Becky and Eileen, and myself.
Yep.
If you can put all three of us in the email, this way we
We cover for each other. Perfect, good idea, all right.
Thank you. Last item under new business, the council determined committee assignments for the current year, we've received our list of what's been, what things were, and I learned another thing that I didn't know I had for the past year, and that's Merrimack Safeguard, so I feel badly about that.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to table this until May tenth, until we're a full council?
We could.
The only one that would need to be filled before May tenth is the, I believe, the Conservation Commission? I believe Jackie sits on the Conservation Commission, so I don't know if somebody just wants to, I don't even know if they have a meeting, but if somebody wants to sit in on their meeting.
Tuesdays? It's Tuesdays.
Yeah, um, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know their, their schedule, Conservation Commission.
Mondays?
Mondays.
First, first and third?
Um, I think it's second.
Second and fourth?
Which would be May ninth.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, it's tenth.
Yes, before, so, it, that's just something.
It's one meeting.
I, I've just, you know, I'm just saying.
Anybody interested in that one, I mean, I.
You know, if somebody wants to sit in.
If somebody's interested, you can jump to the front of the line right now, we could do that, but otherwise.
I mean, could we, could we say which ones we really want to stick with, I mean, the people who would, you know, could be able to have sort of a preference, don't you think?
I would think so, but I don't want to rain on anybody's parade, of course, but, yeah, I, Nancy, you had the first one, I, we could.
I'd still have to say, stay with that.
Now, Council Chairman?
What, Chair?
You want to stay with Chairman?
No, Adult Community Center.
Hold that one.
And the only one I care about, of course, as everybody knows, is highway safety.
That's your?
And I, that, that's his baby, that's my baby. It is, huh? But. Does, does anybody here?
I'm also staying with the New Hampshire Rail Transit Authority.
So, does anybody, I guess the Conservation Commission's the big one, that.
That's the only one, Jackie, Jackie was on that one.
I'll, I'll join the Conservation.
You want to do Conservation, okay.
I, can I trade out of the Technology Committee?
Absolutely. Should we, I mean, Bill had suggested waiting at
Yeah, let's wait.
if we wanted to get this.
But there are some biggies, like, do you still want to do the planning board? I mean, that's a biggie, a new person should not be on a planning board, it's either you or Bill.
Um, I guess I'd like to stay with it for now.
I have absolutely no problem with that.
And you as an alternate?
Absolutely. I show up once a year when Tom goes on vacation with his family, it's a great feeling, we get that down tight, real tight.
I mean, Eileen's just stays as the cemetery trustee.
Queen of the day.
The authorized sewer rap, I mean, all those are. Let's see, Bill's got the Ed Cac Heritage, Finley, what's your thought, Finley, on, you're open for?
Yeah, no, I'll stick with that, and again, unless our new person would like it, I'm fine with that, but I, I, I'm good, definitely good with that.
And we're really the required, what about Parks and Rec, Peter?
I'm enjoying it, I wouldn't mind staying.
Two big ones in.
Maybe you want to ask them, though.
Yeah, so those are required, and if the new person that comes in, they can be asked, is there something you'd like to?
Yeah.
Right?
I'll go to that Town Center Committee, I don't know when they need. Yeah, I guess not doing that, thank you, no.
Not doing that.
Not doing that.
Down noon time.
My question is, is Dan Dwyer still attending the rail transit?
I, I think he's, I think he's dialing in. All right.
Good, so the majority is done, but.
Bill, are you going to stay with the NRPC?
Absolutely.
I hope so, thanks.
I, I'm enjoying it.
See, so we're doing it, we didn't think we'd do it, we are doing it.
Um, Peter Flood told me that I was, and I didn't think I was, and I'm not here, because I thought I messed up on that, because he said, no, you're supposed to be on, and I didn't, and I'm not on this, so.
And according to this.
Well, Jackie was, don't you attend those meetings?
She was a regular member, wasn't she, of the Town Center Committee?
Yeah. I, I have in the, in six or eight months, again, because I didn't think I was part of it, and Peter had thought I was, but.
So we've got Ed Cac, Safeguard.
Is Bill staying with the Ed Cac?
Technology or Town Center?
So, I have no problem staying with Ed Cac, however, I have been involved with that committee
Since its inception.
since its inception.
So we can do a question mark, right?
And I almost would prefer
New blood.
and I haven't had the chance to talk to Susan, I enjoy the people, they do good work, but I would not mind having a new person do that. Somebody new, somebody fresh.
So we have Ed Cac, we have Heritage Commission.
I think, I know, I think Council Thornton would be, would really, Ed Cac on the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. Thanks, Tom.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
I'm trying to figure out what I want here.
They don't meet that often.
They don't meet that often, they meet every third Wednesday.
Is it at night?
Yeah, seven to eight-thirty, they got that time down real tight.
I, I'll go to that, whatever it is. I, yeah, I don't know, I don't figure it out.
Economic Development.
Okay.
So we've got Safeguard, Technology, and Town Center.
I'll take it. If you remember mine.
Heritage is a question mark, right, Finley?
Oh, no, I, I, I will, I will definitely do it, unless, but if, if this new person coming in would like it, it's all good, yeah.
Open, okay. And also Merrimack Safeguard, is that open as well, maybe?
Well, I didn't know I was supposed to be doing that, so I will, I'll continue, I'll start doing it.
And Technology Committee, question mark, and Town Center Committee, so there are one, two, that's done, one, two, three, three choices.
Who did we say was going to do Parks and Rec, I didn't.
Parks and Rec is going to be Peter.
You're going to still do Parks and Rec, you said? Yep.
I got Ed Cac. That's your thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
I just, I have two that I don't have a name with.
And that is Technology and Town Center, right?
Correct, that's correct, those, that's.
Okay, those two are still up in the air, which
Correct.
aren't going to, Town Center meets tomorrow?
Yes.
All right, and then Technology will meet when they call a meeting, so it's not anything urgent there.
Nor is it required.
Nor is it required.
The Technology, they, they don't have a meeting planned, do they, Peter?
They don't have set meetings.
Yeah, so it's when they need it.
Been having a hard time getting to get, getting together, really, because of schedules, and these guys are all working, and they're working hard to try and do it, but
Yeah, right.
Someone like it's schedules are crazy.
And then Town Center is going to.
Uh, how long does, how many, when does the Town Center Committee meet?
Noon on Fridays?
Fridays.
They meet at noon on Friday, once a month.
That'll be top five, I would actually be very interested in that, but that's something I'm working.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll pick that up again, because I, you know, I enjoy doing that one.
Noon on Fridays?
Well, why don't we see if the new person wants to do it?
Yep, no, we could do that.
That should be part of our interview question. Would you be able to meet on Fridays at dune time?
All right, so.
We will, we'll print up a clean sheet
Okay.
with those one.
No, I can't, I got that Ed Cac.
You can do two.
I do, I got, I got the rail.
We'll have this for the next meeting, we'll have it all typed up for you, reviewed, and
All right.
we'll have
For the tenth?
Was there a motion to table that?
Well, we did ninety percent of it, we'll finalize it on the tenth, right?
We can table it.
Yes.
Table finalize it to the tenth.
Why don't we just assign the unknown members to bunch of these committees?
We could. They may withdraw their application.
All Eileen's committees?
Oh, yeah, all right, then we, we, if we should table, let's, we'll table it, all those in favor of tabling, May tenth, the next meeting, yep. All those, uh.
Motion.
And Mr. Chairman?
And I'll second.
Motion by Council Boyd, second by Nancy, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, six zero.
We'll have it typed up, we'll, we have.
Thank you, sorry about that. All right, moving on to minutes, the approval of the April twelfth, two thousand eighteen minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council approve the Town Council meeting minutes of Thursday, April twelfth, as presented.
Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Pete Albert. Further discussion, no, any changes?
On page eight, line forty-five, it says Counselor Koenig. Says Counselor Koenig thanked Counselor Koenig, but that's not really what happened.
Thank.
I was thanking Counselor Flood.
I've never known you to be redundant, Counsel Koenig.
Counselor Koenig thanks itself.
I mean, I deserve being thanked, but, you know.
Yeah.
It was for Counselor Flood that I was thanking.
That was on purpose, they did that to see.
Just to see if anybody reads it, yeah.
Anything further? All those in favor of the amended minutes, say, five, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, um, seven, six, zero, zero. Comments from the press, and comments from the public? Comments from the council, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, this past Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the VFW Post eighty-six forty-one, the Loyalty Day banquet, where they honored Police Officer of the Year Detective First Class Michael Murray, they honored firefighter Lenwood Brown as the firefighter AM-EMT of the year, and firefighter Gordon Orthot was awarded the firefighter paramedic of the year. They also recognized Marsha Conterino as the citizenship teacher winner for that particular district of the VFW. They also recognized nine high school students from Merrimack in their participation in the Voice, Voices of Democracy Essay Contest, something that I participated in some thirty odd years ago. I do, the Auxiliary had their winners, the, the Post had their winners, so the Post, first place went to Benjamin Richards, second place went to Robert D. Felice, and third place went to Kristen Lavoy, interesting individual Kristen Lavoy, because the women awarded her the second place award, with first place going to Emma Krug, and third place going to Jude Roberts, so I think very interesting that both the men and the women recognized this particular young lady, Kristen Lavoy, for what she talked about in her essay. And then the, in her speech and essay, and then they had the Patriots Band Essay Contest, which is just a straight essay. First place went to Sam Reed, second place went to Brooke Lane, and third place went to Elizabeth Jacob, so to all the students, I want to congratulate you for your hard work, I want to contract, congratulate the teacher, Marsha Conterino, for her hard work, but I really want to thank Officer Murray, firefighter Brown, and firefighter Orthot for what they do day in, day out to contribute to the quality of life and the public safety here in Merrimack. It's a testament to their professionalism, it's a testament to their willingness to make sure that their skills are up to date, so that when they are called to do their job, they are doing it with the utmost precision that we ask them to do on a daily basis. Lastly, I do want to thank VFW Commander Max Quail, Chaplain Andy Steves, and the Auxiliary President Julie DeRube for putting on the luncheon and putting on a, a wonderful event at the VFW, they had over a hundred people in attendance, and it really was a, it was a great day for everybody that was involved, so I want to thank the VFW and the Auxiliary and, and the team to make this event really successful. In that same regard, it is running season again in the town of Merrimack, and the student who I just mentioned here, I apologize, Robert D. Felice is sponsoring and putting on, on May nineteenth, the five K at Merrimack High School. It is the Armed Forces Day, Veterans Appreciation Five K Run and Walk. All proceeds, and I thought this was a great concept, all proceeds from the race benefit veterans who have never gone to Mount Washington, given the
veterans who have never gone to Mount Washington, given the opportunity to be driven up to the top of Mount Washington, be offered the opportunity to experience the greatest wonder in the state of New Hampshire, which is Mount Washington. So I look forward to participating, I hope members of the community get out. Like I said, it's a run, it's a walk, it's a neat little thing, it's the Magic Mile around O'Gara Drive, so it's going to be a fun event. So I hope people get out to support the cause, so. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for the comments, Tom.
I'd like to thank the council for putting your trust in me as the vice chair, and to point out to Finley that I will endeavor to fulfill that position to the best of my abilities, to work with you, to bring the council forward, and thank the town of Merrimack again for electing me back into the council seat in this past election. I appreciate the support that you've given me as well, and I will continue to endeavor to do my best to advance Merrimack. Thank you.
Anything further? I would also, I'd thank everybody for this opportunity. Nancy's got a big smile over here, she kills me, but anyhow, Nancy, again, I said it earlier, all you've done for all those four years, which, that escaped me, was just amazing.
Well, remember, it was after Dave Yakabach passed.
Yep.
So it wasn't a full four years, but it wasn't, it wasn't very long after.
Yeah, so we.
And as I've mentioned 100 times, Dave sent me an email, Dave sent me an email a week before he passed, and I remember saying, well, I don't want to be vice chair because I don't know what I'm doing. And he had a whole list of things, well, this is what you learned, da-da-da-da, and at the very end, he says, remember, I'll have your back.
Yeah.
And then he passed a week later. So more than once I've said, you better have my back, and he did.
And he did, yeah, because you ran it masterfully, I have to say, so I definitely appreciate it. All right. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Tom Thornton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. 6-0. Thank you.